The regular meeting of the Folsom City Council. Will you please call the roll?
Council members Howell?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Aquino?
Here.
Chalencirla?
Here.
And Kozlowski?
Here. Okay, if everybody will please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The regular meeting of the Folsom City Council. All right. Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have any agenda updates for tonight?
There's one agenda update for item number five. Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Cagiano General Engineering, Inc. for the construction of the water system rehabilitation project number two and appropriation of funds. And it's been distributed to city council and is on the back table for the public.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, first up is business from the floor. We have a number of people that would like to speak this evening. Just in the interest of, you know, keeping tradition, what we do is this is an opportunity for you to speak on items that are not on the agenda, so topics other than what we have agendized for this evening. And each speaker will have three minutes. I am not going to use a hook to pull you off, but please conclude your comments succinctly once you reach that limit.
And Mayor Kozlowski, we have had a request from some members of the public that it's hard to hear us and might be the masks, I'm not sure, but if we could all focus on speaking more loudly into the microphone.
Excellent. Okay, very good. So will you please call the first speaker?
First speaker is Mary Ann Selenovich, followed by John Ingram.
Come on to the podium. The small match game microphone is the one you want to use.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can also use the small one that's up here, just as long as you move it towards your mouth, yeah.
Thank you. My first item that I'd like to speak about is the See Click Fix app that the city uses and residents use to report items that need to be fixed. And my issue with it, I'm on it all the time, is that there's one person who writes his name as Mr. Anonymous. He posts three to four times a day, every day, the same issues over and over and over again. He does this daily, photographing homeless paraphernalia in an effort to shame and cause the city to act. He also displays pictures of cars, motorhomes, and shopping carts under different topics like he will post a picture of a shopping cart and say that this is an abandoned vehicle. There's very many things you can put it under. I would like to see, because I've asked and talked to Sarah before, she didn't know who controls it or whatever. I'd like to see Mr. Anonymous blocked. If they really have issues, they should be able to put their name on it. And the way he does it is to shame people and the city. And I think it's a real disservice to the community, especially we have a lot of new residents moving in and even to the existing residents. So I don't know what you can do in that arena, but I'd like to know. Okay?
Okay, very good. We'll look into that.
Thank you.
Next speaker is John Ingram, and after that will be Blanca Hurtado.
Hello.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, yeah, I'm back. Yeah, I'm John Ingram. I'm the Director of Operations and Community Care at Powerhouse. And at the last council meeting, we had the opportunity to make a presentation about the funding for the unhoused. And after we finished that presentation, some comments were made about Powerhouse and Hart submitting separate proposals in addition to the Alliance proposal, and we also did not have the ability to set the record straight since our time kind of had already ended. So we felt, and our board felt, it was important for us to be able to just to clarify a couple of things because, well, we heard the comments. So that is why we're here today, to get the opportunity to speak some truth into what really happened. Powerhouse and Hart were specifically asked by city staff to make their own proposals of how we best, how we thought the money could be best used for the most people. And that is why we submitted our own proposals. Those proposals were submitted prior to the Alliance, even deciding to submit a proposal. And so we, for the last 30 years, have been collaborative partner with organizations in Folsom and the city council and other things. So we just want to say, you know, in the future, I think it's important to remember to ask more questions than make judgments. And we would have been happy to clarify anything had questions arose. So we definitely respect the Alliance and are excited to work with it and Rosario leading that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next speaker is Blanca Hurtado, followed by Mike Reynolds.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you guys?
Good.
It's my first time speaking here, so I wrote down my stuff and I'm going to read it.
Good strategy.
I'm here to ask for you to please support and do everything in your power to advocate for mass choice in schools. Even if you are in favor of masking everyone, which is fine, having a choice allows for this. I come to you with a solution-focused mindset. I've been called a conspiracy theories theorist because I have questioned the quote-unquote "science." I hear individuals in meetings, school board meetings, Board of Supervisor meetings, they say mass choice is not following the science. Is there a study that found masking children is safe? If so, I would like to see it and read it and see if it's peer-reviewed and if it fits the criteria of reasonable research. In addition, scientists supported tobacco industry. They even had propaganda of pregnant women smoking cigarettes. It was supposedly safe. Scientists supported the overuse of antibiotics, then the science changed. Scientists and doctors supported the PCR tests, now it's being recalled. Scientists supported heavy opioid use. We ended with an opioid epidemic. My point is, science is meant to be questioned. You, and I'll look at all of you individually, I'm speaking to all of you. Don't be afraid to question anyone or anything. Don't be afraid to hold the line in support of bodily autonomy, of choice. Those, this is a quote I found and I wanted to share with you guys. Those who are willing to risk everything and gain nothing are probably on the side of truth. So I urge you guys to show some support for both the community members that want masks and both, and also the communities that do not want masks, because mass choice would, in my opinion, fulfill that need. And in closing, I ask that you speak or write to the Board of Supervisors, write the school board, reach out to Public Health, and ask them to show evidence, data, actual numbers, which they are making these decisions based upon. Please stand up and support choice on masks in school. Thank you.
All right.
Next speaker is Mike Reynolds, and then Adara Blair.
Good evening, Mr. Reynolds.
Council members, for those who I have not met, I am Mike Reynolds, and I'm the President of the Historic Folsom Residents Association. The topic tonight, one that's near and dear, I'm sure, to the council's heart, that over the years, the spillover of commercial traffic, or parking, I would say, into the residential areas has created some quality-of-life issues, and primarily on the weekends. But ultimately, on July 14th, the HEFFRA Board sponsored a community meeting for what would be deemed the hotspot streets in the ad hoc report to gather inputs, and that's the proposal I'm going to bring to the board tonight. So the primary ask is for the city to support, and this is kind of a word salad, a restrictive parking signage pilot, and I'll emphasize the word pilot, on sort of the hotspot streets of Figaroa between Reading and Scott and sort of the adjacent feeders of Scott and Wool coming off of Sutter Street. They would look for a recommendation from the city on some type of code enforcement that's allowed by your code books. And, you know, this will be brought back as kind of a final proposal for a duration of, you know, at least three months, because really what we're talking about here is behavioral modification. The idea with the pilot being, the residents were apprehensive about permanent solutions because of the fear of the unknown, and there's lots of adjacent stakeholders who could be impacted. And so the idea with the pilot being, there's an opportunity to gather data and do modifications. So that is the primary ask. There was a couple of other key things that came out of that meeting. Probably the second one was wayfinding signage, that as we start to try and do behavioral modification, the signage today, if the goal is to move parking to the structures in the commercial areas or designated spots, is lacking in such to guide people who are not familiar with the district. So significant improvement in wayfinding signage, and that could even be in terms of map apps, because I think there's ways to do that. And then a couple of others being, working with the businesses to try and encourage their employees to park in the designated commercial areas, and also, brain blank. It'll come to me. But anyway, I'll close with the one other thing to this, is we did socialize this with a lot of other stakeholder groups in the historic districts, so the Merchants Association, the HPL. So what came out of that is a general consensus of support, because, you know, it's not a we-they problem. It's kind of an us problem now that we all sort of sink or swim together. So it isn't just HEFFRA bringing this, but the fact that most of the stakeholders say, it's time to try something and let's see what happens. So I'll open it up for questions.
Very good. This part of the meeting, we don't get to have discussion about it, but we will on the 24th of August have a...
September 14th, we're going to hear a report back. It's going to be basically a quarterly report going forward on the recommendations of the Historic District Parking Solution ad hoc. And that would be an excellent opportunity for you to come and comment. And then the council has an agendized item where they can actually speak to this item. This puts, this is when you're speaking from business from the floor, it's not agendized. So per the Brown Act, they really can't engage and have a dialogue about it. But September 14th is the date we picked up for, picked out for a quarterly report on this issue.
And that would be great, because obviously we know this is one of the items on your pick list, so.
Yeah, so we'd welcome that conversation then. I know they would welcome the conversation then.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it forward tonight.
You're welcome.
All right.
Next speaker, Adara Blair, followed by Bob Holderness.
Hi, sorry, the name is Adina Blair.
Adina Blair.
Nice to see you. So I'm just going to tag on to what Mike Reynolds was saying about the parking. I know you guys aren't ready to discuss it tonight, but I live on Figaroa, and Kozlowski and YK were at our community meeting about this, and so they understand where I'm coming from. But I do not want permits. I think that signage would be appropriate to begin with. And we need to just work on directing people to the parking garage. And the signage for that has been very poor and almost nonexistent. But the one parking sign that I can think of, that I see all the time, is right at Scott and Natoma Street. And it's directing people right into the neighborhood where I live. So if you guys could please move that sign, and this is like the third time I've asked it in this three-minute city council thing, move that sign to down where they can actually find the garage, because they're not going to find it by diving into our neighborhood right there at the Scott and Natoma Street. So I'm just supporting HEFFRA, and also, he was saying some other streets, but I think initially we were talking about Bridge Street to Decatur, because if it stops at Scott, then people are just going to be parking further up Figaroa, as they already do. So that's it. And the last little thing I want to tag on to is, there was another speaker talking about masking and kids, and I work in public health, I'm a nurse in that department for the county, and we need the kids masked. They haven't even been vaccinated to 12 years old, so it's just, it's absolutely pertinent that we have masking. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Next speaker, Bob Holderness, and then Denise Atterbury.
Mr. Mayor, members, Robert G. Holderness appearing tonight as a private citizen, but also I should disclose that I'm working with Lance Klug to represent business owners who own 603 Sutter Street. And in doing that, we met with your senior staff, and they wisely recommended that we outreach to the residents. And we've had meetings with Mike Reynolds and his associate, who's president of that association, and we're very supportive of his effort to try to find a solution to residential parking. We, our client's property is at the corner of Sutter and Scott, and we're acutely aware of the problem, and we're working with them. And I think, as Mike pointed out, that we're beginning to build a consensus down there that we have to have a solution that works for everybody. And to me, that's progress, and you should be proud of your staff and your residents, because we're going the right way. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Can I ask Catherine, did you want to speak from the floor now or on a topic later on? Yes, Ms. Corbett? Okay, very good. Got it. Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that.
Denise Atterbury, next speaker, and then Jim Snook.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Hi there.
I apologize, I wasn't quite prepared. I have lived in this community all of my life, Rancho Cordova, Folsom area, since 1970. Moved to Washington State, a very green state. Came back, only lived there for two and a half years, and came back here. And I'm noticing, my, I'm going to keep it simple, I like to keep things simple, less wording is better. I think there needs to be more community awareness on litter. I see so much litter. More community programs. Maybe the people who are in trouble coming here to clean, different things like that. I'm seeing tons of disrespectful, just out of the car, which is young teenagers, whatever. We need more awareness. Recycling. I'm noticing in Safeway, you know, we pay to buy plastic if I forget my bag. What's wrong with paper, right? Plastics, less plastics. Awareness somehow in the news, signs, however we can make awareness of those things, because it does, after doing some documentaries, I realized that there is an issue. It does get into our fish, it does get into our food. Plastic is no good. It's a chemical, it is a money-making business. Finds possibly signage, mailers, news, like I said. And I think that's all I have for today.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jim Snook, and then Ryan Burnham. Thank you.
Mr. Snook, welcome.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Kozlowski. Just really quick, just with the topic of parking, I thought I'd like to be here because I was on the ad hoc committee, and I wanted to thank the city for that, because it was a very positive experience, a very comprehensive look at things. And amongst those recommendations, many of those are going to take in themselves a comprehensive look. So just that's the point I kind of wanted to make, that we're going to have to look at various things that affect other things, like parking, you know, it's no good unless you have enforcement. So, you know, we want to look at the big view of it and take into account the short-term high priority, which is on that list that the recommendations were. So I think I'm happy now that with the pandemic, which kind of put a stop to our progress, I'm glad to see it's coming back and that we can work together.
The pandemic or the parking activity?
Well.
You set me up for that one, sorry.
Yeah, so, well, I'm just glad that the parking issue is coming back, because we met and, you know, the presentation to council was over a year ago. So here we are, more than a year later, talking about it again. So it's, we're looking forward, and like I said, the experience with the group, which was very diverse, was a really positive, I think, for all of us, and we do want to work together and find solutions, so.
Heck, yeah. Absolutely agree. Thank you. Yeah, masks or no masks, we're pressing forward on solving parking problems.
Ryan Burnham.
Sorry, YK, how are you doing? I would introduce myself to you, but I'm not really familiar with you. My name is Ryan Burnham. I'm a native of this city. I moved here in 1980, graduated Folsom in 1995, okay? Mudakiya yasen. In my language, that's we're all related. How are you doing, y'all? Okay? What my topic is, is what everybody's talking about, but nobody's saying. So please bear with me, because you guys have the numbers, I have the facts, I had them, but my car was stolen and improperly impounded. Hon, he'll know, because he'll get answered questions. So the main issue that I've been seeing is what do we do with the homeless? Now, this is very, very true and dear to me, because I am a Native American. I'm a Chickasaw. And we used to live in Alabama, Tennessee, Kentucky. And that Indians act right, made us move to Oklahoma, and we were pushed out of Oklahoma. So we migrated to Slienas, agriculture. If you know my family history, we are the only ones that did not take government rations. We got on our horses and we moved. We're known for two things, agriculture and warriors. And I'm standing up for the last of my tribe. And this is very important to me, because this is the last of my tribe. People don't understand that there was 180 million Native Americans in this land, 220 different Native tongues in this land before the Europeans came here. Now, these are the facts. I did my research. Prove me wrong, please. 200 different Native tongues, and we're savages. No, 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 no. We're peaceful. Now, what would you do if the Europeans came here? And we've been here for anywhere from 50,000 to 25,000 years. These are facts. Prove me wrong. We're peaceful. They came here, we provided for them. If we did not live here, if they did not live here, they would be dead. How did they repay us? Smallpox, disease. These are the facts. Prove me wrong. We had no disease before the Europeans came here. These are the facts. Prove me wrong. Now. The hardest part about racism is if you're not white, you're not going to get this, unless you go to, let's say, any casino in Milwaukee, New Mexico. Executive chef, white guy, new boss. Natives hate me. Understand why? Because I took their land. I didn't understand the difference between a reservation and a pueblo. Because I didn't know. Can anybody answer that question, between a pueblo and a reservation? Anyone on the council, please?
Mr. Burnham?
Yes?
Normally, we give people three minutes. You've gotten, you got there, so if you would please make your point.
How much time I got left?
Zero time left, but I want you to make your point.
Okay. The difference between a reservation, they're forced to move there, right? Concentration camp, reservation. Pueblo, their land's not good enough. Until there's something worth taking. Trump took the native land in Utah, 80% of our land. That's like saying, you can live in your house, but all you have is your bathroom now. Still doing it. Nobody's talking about it. We need your help. It's important. Why? Because of the homeless? That's where they are now. When does it stop? Because after the homeless, what do you got? Dogs. Why? Because they're the only people crapping in your yard. You give them bathrooms, they have a place to go. Now, you guys have this budget for $25,000, okay? You guys are asking what to do with it, but you're asking wrong people. I am homeless. I am the speaker. Okay? He gave me a job, he gave me an opportunity to prove my worthiness. And I believe that I did, because I canvassed for this man. He hired me to pass out flyers, because I believe in him. And Rosario, she came checked up on us, right? And she's awesome and amazing, and thank you for, because I didn't see anybody else. And I would thank you, I'm sure you guys were doing your thing over somebody else, but thank you for doing what you believe in. I know you lost your husband, so you know that loss. You feel that pain. That's what he goes through, right? All these homeless people are reflections of parentless kids, because they don't have anybody to say, I love you. What they have is, you're on drugs, you're bad. No, they don't have anybody that loves them, and that's what they need. These are repercussions of childless parents, and this is a fact. They need love and discipline, father, mother. Doesn't matter if it's father, mother, 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 they need both, balance. He gets it, she gets it. Because if you don't, you don't get the discipline, you don't get the respect. You've got to have both, you've got to balance. These are repercussions of this. These are facts. Why? Because psychology's proven it. You know how I know that? Because I took psychology, therapy.
Ryan, thank you. You've given us a lot to think about.
Okay, let me say what you can do.
You got like 10 seconds.
All right, this is what I'll do.
Just one, one thing.
This is what I promise to you.
Yeah.
With this $25,000, you guys know what to do.
Yeah.
You invest it in that. I want the numbers on what they did. One person off the streets, one homeless person, and this. Your guys' budget isn't about the homeless, because I know what you make. I know what you make, I know what you make. Feel free to tell them what you make, because it's public record. Please, tell them what you make, because they think our tax dollars is because of the homeless. No, our taxes go to you, city councilmen, that are what's best for this community. And if you want to fix this, you listen to me, please.
Okay, this is not the time to get into an extended process.
Actually, this is the last time, what's going on in the world today? This is my last stand. This is my Native American warrior call.
Okay.
Please listen to me. I beg of you.
I apologize, but we've gotten really far afield from the time limit that everyone else...
You guys open until 10:30, can I come back and talk?
Everyone else...
Okay, so I'll sit down, and can I finish when there's more time? Yes, I can. I'll be right here. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, great. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that anybody would like to pull from the consent calendar for discussion?
Do we not have a scheduled presentation first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I was thrown off my big game there a little bit. Scheduled presentations is actually next. Would you call the first item?
Scheduled presentation, new utility bill and payment portal presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Elizabeth Hannah, Revenue Services Supervisor. When our community was surveyed regarding their top priorities for the city's website redevelopment, their number one priority was the utility billing portal. Our residents wanted an improved way to view and pay their bill online or by phone. So I'm excited to share with you a brief overview of the new utility bill pay site, which launched July 13th. So some of the new features are you can make a payment online, by phone or by text, securely store payment information for later use. One-time payments are available without registration. Enroll in auto pay or reoccurring scheduled payments. Go paperless to receive e-bills and payment notifications. So I'm going to walk you briefly through how you can register and set up your payment preferences. So on the main landing page, you click Register Now. You can enter your account number in the two boxes and click Search Invoices. Verify that you're registering for the correct account, select either invoice, and click Register Selected Invoices. Here, you can enter your email, create a password, and complete your registration. All right, you're registered. So now you'll have your at-a-glance page. So here, you can see any recent open invoices that'll show anything due, recent payments, and recent closed invoices, which are invoices that have been paid. So you can set up your auto pay under the Services section. So you'll see Auto Pay just to the right. You can click Edit. On the Auto Pay page, you can select the Please Add a New Payment method. Once you add your payment method for your preferred choice, you can save your information. Once you save your payment information, you can save your auto pay setup. You can also easily enroll in paperless billing. You select to agree to the terms and save your changes. You can also enroll and pay by text, where you put in your cell phone information, save your changes. You will receive a pay-by-text, or you'll receive an enrollment confirmation, and you have to reply via text to confirm your enrollment. So once you do all that, you'll be back at your main page, where you can now see that you're enrolled in auto pay, paperless, and pay-by-text on your account. And these are just some of the sample notifications that our customers will now receive. So they might see that they're enrolled in auto pay, that they're enrolled in the online system, and customers can also receive updated communications, such as payment reminders, payment confirmations, and due date reminders. So I've provided our contact information for any customers that require assistance for all their utility billing needs. We can be reached by phone, email, or in person at City Hall. We are here to help all of our residents. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Any questions from the council? YK, anything?
I welcome this, you know, paperless bills.
Yes.
Right, hoo-hoo.
Very exciting.
I know last time, I think there was a question from one of the residents. They were unable to delete some setup things. Hopefully, you guys might have already addressed those ones, right?
Yes, we've had lots of customers that have reached out, and we can help them with their setup, either remove some of their preferences and get it all updated for them, so.
Thank you for bringing this.
Thank you.
Rosario, anything?
No questions, this is great.
Carrie? Sarah, anything?
I just have a question. I believe there is a surcharge to use a credit or debit card, but not to use an electronic check. I just want to confirm that. And then I also want to confirm, is that opposite of what it used to be with our old system?
Yes, that's correct. So with any credit or debit card payments that you do, whether it's online, in phone, or in person, there's now a 3.50 charge to cover the payment fee to use a card. But there is no fee when you use e-check.
And we're just, Liz, we're just merely capturing the cost that is imposed on us for that credit card usage, right? It's not like the city is just trying to make a buck by, you know, because you're using your Visa.
Yep, it's what they pass on to us for using the card to pay.
Very good, okay. Thank you. I went through and reset up my water bill on this, and it was a breeze, so thank you very much. All right, cool. All right, now the consent calendar, where I was heading before. Are there any items that the council members would like to pull for discussion? Or I'll entertain a motion on the lot.
I'll move Consent.
I'll second.
I'd like to pull item eight, please.
Okay, we're going to pull item number eight.
I'll move items two through seven.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for items two through eight of the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Two through seven.
Two through seven, that's what I said. Two through seven.
You said two to eight. That's okay.
Councilmembers Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchirla?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. Okay, would you please read number eight?
Item number eight of the consent calendar is Resolution Number 10636, a resolution of the City Council approving Amendment Number Two to lease agreement with the Folsom Chamber of Commerce for the depot building located at 200 Wool Street.
Okay. Madam Vice Mayor, would you like to comment first?
Um, well, are there any members of the public who are signed up to speak to this item?
There is one.
Okay. I can make my comment first. First of all, I'm sorry that I'm not able to be at the meeting in person, but I am fully supportive of the Chamber continuing to lease the portion of the building that they need for their operations. My understanding, they have informed the city that they have consolidated their space, their office space, and they are all upstairs now. If we go ahead with this amendment to the lease agreement, this will allow them to sublet the main floor of the building and split the profits with the city 50/50. And we've just never done that. This building has never been used for profit. It has always been a community building that has supported nonprofits and their work, which in turn supports the city of Folsom, our residents, our businesses. We have interest from two other nonprofits who are interested in utilizing the space that the Chamber does not need. And I think it makes sense. And so I'm having a hard time with the amendment that would allow them to sublet the portion of the building that they're not using. So I'll stop right there for now.
Okay, very good. Any other council members like to comment on this first? And then I'm going to ask, open it for public comment from Beth Kelly.
I'll wait for the public comment first, and then probably I'd like to have some comments by myself as well on this topic.
Beth Kelly, you are up. Well, welcome.
Hi. Hi. Beth Kelly, Heritage Preservation League. We're concerned about the renewal of the depot, automatic renewal of the depot lease to the Chamber. This is a national register building, and it's a very good example of Folsom's heritage as the first railroad in the West. We don't feel like the Chamber has maybe been the best steward of this. They put in a modern sliding glass door. And we don't understand why they get this sweetheart deal. They also have the Granite School, and obviously now I understand they're going to move upstairs. So I don't feel, I feel like there are other groups that might do better at taking care of this building, and for instance, the Merchants Association and the Railroad Organization. And if the city can't say no to the Chamber, then we would request that they put in a condition that any improvements or maintenance be designed and reviewed by a historic preservation architect. And also, we're just, you know, without knowing all the terms of the lease, also maybe it should be shortened if you cannot change it, as Sarah has also suggested an option. But anyway, that's our concerns. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to comment on this from the public? All right, back to the council. Mr. Chalamchirla, do you have thoughts on this?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the nice last name, Chalamchirla.
Years of football announcing, I have to practice things.
You've got to practice things, yeah. I was going through this item as well. I know we had a closed-door session as well on this one. My views are very, you know, alignment with what Sarah was talking about. Now, Chamber has been renting this facility for the last 20 years for a dollar a year, right? Now it is coming up for renewal next year, December. So now they were asking us in our request, any space they are not using. They clearly stated the ground floor. We are going to sublet it, and we are going to make the 50/50 of the returns we are getting with the city and the Chamber. So I just want to speak about the Chamber as well. You know, I'm a big fan of Chamber. Please don't take me wrong. If the Chamber wants to give the best volunteer award in this town, I probably will be there on one of the top 10 list, which means I am involved in their activities, because they are doing so much for this town. At the same time, we do have other nonprofit organizations relatively doing a good work. So since this is a city property, now they are not going to use that ground floor. Let's open that one up for other organizations. And we did check that property, whether this can be given to the two parties directly from the city. The access routes and the contracts, our city attorney also confirmed, yes, this can be given to the two parties directly lease from City Hall. It doesn't have to be a sublet from the Chamber. But I'm all in support of giving that what they want for a dollar per year, and what they don't want is giving it to the other organizations and let them be serving the same mindset. So with that, I think I'm going to pause it, and I let other council members, anything they would like to share.
Ms. Rodriguez, any comments?
Well, I think, you know, when we had discussions about this building, I'm a big believer that our community has an incredibly strong business community. I think historically, having a business in Folsom has been very profitable. And one of the reasons is we have one incredibly well-organized and well-run Chamber of Commerce. And so I attribute just the successes of businesses historically here and those at the abroad, working with the Greater Folsom Partnership, whether it be Chorsum, Fed Corp, or the Chamber of Commerce. And so I'm a big supporter of them maintaining their contract. I think that having that focus of the business community in the Historic District has been very profitable, not just to those businesses in the Historic District, but to the businesses throughout all of Folsom. So those are my comments. And I think that, you know, if the Historic District Association wanted to, you know, I guess, have a desk or some space, I think that is something that they can work out amongst themselves. That's my comment.
Very good, thank you. Carrie, any thoughts?
Nope, I would move the item, though.
I would just like to make one comment, and then I'll entertain a motion. I, you know, we kind of, I agonized over this one a bit. And I just want everybody to realize that this is not a zero-sum game. The Chamber is a, you know, gives us an opportunity to have continuity in terms of the stewardship of that building. But it does not mute everyone's voice in saying how it should be maintained, what should be used inside of it. You know, people can vote with their pocketbooks, and that lease has opportunities for the city to back out of it if for some reason it becomes something that we don't want to continue. And it also leaves us with the co-responsibility for selecting anybody that might sublease it. So this is not an absolute, you know, slamming the door on lots of other excellent suggestions, including those from my colleagues up here on the dais and from the other organizations in town that would like to make use of that building. And I think it has, the discussion has actually been super productive in terms of getting a feel for how we might use it going forward. But there is some real value in continuity of stewardship of that building, and the Chamber has done a reasonably good job up until now. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
I will still move item eight.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
No.
Chalamchirla?
Before I give my vote, you know, whatever the vote is going to be, whether it is in favor of Chamber to continue, or if it is not, if it is in favor of Chamber, I sincerely request Chamber to work with the other nonprofits to give the same leverage and work together. That's going to be my request, and here my vote is no.
Anne Kozlowski?
Yes. Okay, we are moving on to item number nine, Public Hearing for Resolution 10672. Will you please read the full description?
Resolution Number 10672, a resolution approving the final engineer's report confirming the diagrams and assessments and ordering the levy of assessments for maintenance and servicing of improvements with Prairie Oaks Ranch Number Two Landscaping and Lighting District in the city of Folsom for fiscal year 2021-2022.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hi there.
Members of the council. My name is Zachary Paris. I'm your Landscape Services Manager here at the city of Folsom. The item before you this evening is a proposed overlay district for the Prairie Oaks Ranch Landscaping and Lighting District here in the city of Folsom. Prairie Oaks Ranch is one of the oldest districts we have in town that does not already have an overlay district. And it was originally formed in 1995. We began public outreach for this proposed overlay district late in 2020, sending out letters to residents within the district, letting them know the situation and just giving them some background information. We held our first public meeting on February 17th, and then we had a follow-up meeting on March 11th. In addition to the public meetings, we created a webpage on the city website and described the district, its current challenges, and what options the residents within the district have. Ballots were sent out early in June and are due back tonight before the close of this public hearing. If any residents of the district are present and in need of replacement ballot, we can make those available. And if there are any residents that have not yet turned in their ballot, they need to be turned in before the close of this public hearing. Our consultant is available on the phone, our assessment engineering consultant, if anyone has any questions. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Okay, so we now will move on to the actual election. The public hearing, excuse me. So this is the date and time for the public hearing on the proposed Prairie Oaks Ranch Number Two Lighting and Landscaping District. Ballots must be submitted by the close of the public hearing. So is there any public testimony from anyone from the district in question?
One speaker card.
Okay, we have one speaker card. Donald Burress.
Good evening. My name is Donald Burks. I'm a resident of the Steeplechase Landscaping and Lighting District. I was on the LNL Committee for a number of years and was unaware that I had continuously been given false information about the finances of our district. I'd just like to bring up a little history of districts that have overlay, overlay LNL districts, a couple of them fairly recently. Blue Ravine Oaks, District Number Two, had revenue of $37,762, expenditures of $31,000. After setting aside the reserve that the law permits, which the city uses six months, so I use half of their annual assessment. But after setting that money aside, at the end of the last fiscal year, that district had 174,302. That's way, way over the $31 or $31,000 that it costs to run the district, and it is a clear violation of the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, which says that if there is a surplus, it shall be carried forward and applied to the following year's assessment. The city does not do that. They haven't done it for years. They violate the law. It's intentional. Another district, and this one is also one that is not really very old, is a Number Two overlay. It had total revenue for, and this is for the last fiscal year, because I don't have this fiscal years or the recent one. But they had revenues of $64,000, expenditures of $34,000. And after setting aside the reserve, they had a surplus of $212,000. That money belongs to the residents of that district and was supposed to be applied to their assessment to reduce that assessment. The city does not do that. It violates the law. It's really hard to get through to you people, but you don't read the law, and you kind of ignore it. I hope that this new district has set an expiration date so that they won't have this thing going on forever and having the money just simply pile up in the city's pocket when it belongs in the citizens' pocket. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The, I'm going to close the public hearing. This is, I'm going to announce this on this topic.
Mike, could I ask a question?
Certainly.
This is probably more for Elaine or Steve rather than Zach, but I was just curious. So for the Landscape and Lighting District, it's still the Prop 218 process, but they're allowed to put in a cost escalator. But for the utility rate increase, that's also a Prop 218 process, but we aren't just allowed to put in a cost escalator. And I'm wondering what the difference is.
I'm going to ask our city attorney, Steve Wong, to field that question. Vice Mayor Aquino?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council, Stephen Wong, City Attorney. And that is, you are absolutely correct, Madam Vice Mayor. It is under Prop 218. The process is the same or similar, except the laws are different pertaining to fees and charges and assessments. In this case, the Streets and Highways Code governs how landscape and lighting districts are formed and how the assessments are levied after being approved. are formed and how the assessments are levied after being approved by the city council. And within the enactment, the authorization legislation, the state legislatures did allow escalation clause for the city council to approve, and the city council has in the past approved such escalation for newer landscape and lighting districts. Such is not a case for utility rates. So, without that authorization clause in the law, city is not able to escalate. However, the city council does have the, the ability in advance to approve increase of rates, which is gonna be presented before you tonight. So, you'll be able to see proposed increases in rates, but it's not escalation in the sense of the landscape and lighting district assessments.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I guess we've, we've had this discussion before, but it's worth asking the question for the benefit of those in the room. Mr. City Attorney, the, the manner in which we collect lighting and landscape district charges and the way in which they accumulate for future needs, is there anything currently that opens us up to, that creates any exposure to us in terms of violating any law regarding those things?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity to clarify Mr. Berks' comments and concerns. Mr. Berks is absolutely correct. The assessments levied from the, the residents in the landscape lighting district belong to the ratepayers. They don't come to the city's general fund. They're not part of the city's revenue. Everything collected from a district are spent for the benefit of that particular district, not even for another district, only for that particular district. And in the event there's any kind of surplus because the city manages the operation better or the cost of services were overestimated, and hence there's a surplus at the end of the year, the surplus does get carried over for the benefit of the district ratepayers in, in the next year's assessment. However, there's also a particular long item for accumulation of needed, I, I'm not exactly sure the terminology right in front of me, but for needed replacements or, or repair in the future. So, those are the long-term or short-term reserve that have to be collected in advance so that we do not get into a situation where a particular improvement fails and there's no money in the landscape and lighting district to pay for the repair or replacement of that improvement. So, every improvement has a, a projected capital life, and hence additional assessments are allocated towards that kind of replacement or, or repair of that particular improvement like such, for example, a fence. When is time to make that repair or replacement so that the residents do not get caught off guard at the time when that expenditure is needed? So, those are the, the long-term and the short-term reserves that's gotta be budgeted for and, and collected and accumulated. They're not refunded, they're not carried over in terms of routine yearly operation. They're in a savings account, so to speak, for purpose of paying for the eventual replacement or repair at the time that's needed. And, and, and those are identified by improvements such as fence, signs, sidewalk, or whatever. They are not to be commingled.
Yeah. The way I've explained it in the past is that the expenses to maintain the assets that are maintained or improved by the lighting and landscape district fees do not have the same cost of repair every single year. Some years are much more than others, so banking funds in order to take care of those more expensive things is what we do. Okay, very good. I do have one more member of the public, Ray Hall, and I apologize, I can't read the handwriting of your last name. It's, it's most likely my eyes that are faulty.
No, I, I wrote it very quickly, so my apologies. I didn't write it very well. This is my first time here, and I don't know the protocol.
Welcome.
So, my name is Rahul Srivastava, and I've lived in Folsom for about like 15 years now, and in the, in this community where we are talking about the LNL, you know, fee increase, I, you know, the area is very nice, and we have good landscaping. It's quite well-maintained already. Of course, we need some improvement, and I appreciate this, you know, what do you call, study to, to see how much fee increase, but I do think we could probably do better than just more than doubling the fee. It's like 200 something, and now you're proposing 300 plus with CPI adjustment to inflation, so that seems quite high to me. I mean, already we have seen fee increases in, across the board in different things. So, I do request, you know, the council members and, you know, the, to look for alternatives, to explore how, different ways. Maybe we can have community groups, maybe we can have, you know, other ways to improve our landscaping in the area and not just like a centralized way of increasing the fee and then spending that money. And also, this is the first time I received this notice, and I heard there were other meetings in February and March, I believe, but I didn't see the notice, and I was like, whoa, okay, I should have somehow, but, you know, there was no talk in the community about this fee increase, and I think when we get just one mailer, we tend to kind of ignore it, right, rather than like multiple mailers. So, maybe the outreach could have been improved a little bit so that, you know, residents actually get to, to voice their opinion. So, thank you.
Well, this is an election of the residents, so you definitely have a voice here, so you're gonna get to have your ballot counted. It, it does, you know, it, it's probably worthwhile to just mention what the outreach process is.
Yeah.
Just generally so that we have some clarity about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elaine, is there, do you have a recollection of how, how we handle lighting and landscape districts?
Yeah, I think Mr. Perez can speak to that most directly.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome back.
I guess just to clarify, do you want me to speak directly to how we do outreach for this particular situation?
Yeah, how do you?
It's most appropriate to talk about what you did for this particular one, since that was the question.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So, we did send out multiple mailers, and I can follow up with the resident here just to figure out what might have been the issue. All of them were to the same addresses, so seeing as you get one, I would assume, you know, all are going to the same place. That said, we did send one, like I said, in early 2020, letting know that we were gonna have multiple public meetings. We did create a new webpage on the city website to bring attention to the overlay district, and then we also have a representative in our lighting and landscaping district advisory committee within Prairie Oaks Ranch that did his own outreach in the community, you know, social media, things like that. So, being that we were doing this in kind of the COVID era, it does limit some of our opportunities for engagement in most of these situations that we've, or my predecessors have done in the past, we would have community meetings at a local park or somewhere in the neighborhood where it's a little bit easier to get continuity with the residents. So, we did, you know, give our best attempt to, to reach everybody. We also, in having those two meetings, I made sure I duplicated pertinent information just so if you weren't able to make the first meeting, you weren't missing out on any information in the second meeting, things like that. I do welcome the feedback. We can definitely, you know, if this continues and we have to do other overlay districts, send out additional mailers. Hopefully, we'll be able to have more in-person meetings and maybe get a little bit better reach.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. So, if there are no other questions from the council, I'm gonna call for...
I have a comment to make.
YK, fire away.
Yeah. Thank you for the residents coming and expressing your observations and your concerns as well. Zach, you may or may not have the answer for this. While our city attorney explaining the things clearly, I see the nodding of the residents are, no, that shouldn't be the way. So, whatever it is, they're understanding something, I think there is no clarity for them. And even some of the comments Mr. Donald Berks said, your finances were giving a wrong impression, and he read some of the, you know, dollar amounts. Maybe Stacy, it's either offline or somehow we have to clarify them how it is, what it is. That way, we want to make sure they are clear on what they are, you know, getting elected. That's all I want to make a comment on that one. And you said already, Jack, I think you are going to work with them offline to clarify whatever it is. So, thank you again on that.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments?
No comments.
Okay, all right. So, this is the final call for ballots. The city clerk, would you please tabulate the ballots that we have received? And anybody that would like to observe the tabulation of the ballots is welcome to do Okay, so we're, we're gonna wait for this process of tabulation to take place, so if anybody else wants to get up and stretch their legs, you're welcome to.
I, I, I will.
What?
Mayor, is that okay?
Oh, okay. Gosh, okay.
What is that?
I would actually like to take a recess for five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll be back. Now, are you with us still?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. All right, I'm gonna reconvene our meeting, and we are actually going to let the ballot counting process go forward, and anybody who wants to observe can go do that, and we're gonna continue with our agenda, and then when they're complete, we'll bring that, we'll bring the result back to the, back for, for presentation. So, we are gonna move on now to item number 10, Old Business. Would you please read the item?
Yes, Old Business, Old Business, item 10, Resolution Number 10669, a resolution of the Folsom City Council supporting the Regional Water Authority's Resolution 2021-03 regarding extreme drought conditions in 2021 and authorizing the city manager to implement any further reduction requirements.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Todd Ising. I am a Utilities Section Manager in, for the city and Environmental Water Resource Department. So, I'm here tonight to give a briefing on the current drought situation and ask council to adopt the Resolution 10669 related to the Regional Water Authority's resolution regarding the drought. So, first, I'd like to give you guys a little briefing on the situation of the drought. This graph is a little busy, but I'll go into it a little bit. So, this graph is basically a cumulative tabulation of the water supply, the water precipitation in Northern Sierra, and so I'd like to point out a few items on here. So, the, the baby blue shaded area is generally the average rainfall we might see in the, in the Sierra in any given year. The black line at the bottom is the driest year we've seen, which is 1977. So, the current year that we're in right now is the blue line just above it. So, we are in a very dry year, and naturally, the inflows to Folsom are pretty low. We're about a third of what we normally see at this point, and so we are definitely in a dry year, and subsequently, our reservoirs reflect that. Looking specifically at Folsom, you can tell from the graph, the, the little blue line is level of the lake, representation of it anyway, and so we are about 25% full right now of our capacity. So, we are at about 250,000 acre feet of the overall, just under a million. But this is not just a Folsom issue, statewide issue. If you look at Orville-Shasta, the other, the other reservoirs, they're also very low. We've even heard that Orville, first time ever, might not be able to run its power plants because of low water levels. And then Shasta might not have enough water for the salmon run, so it's very urgent to, to conserve water. And so, as a result of that, the governor has had two emergency orders that he has put out there. The first one was in May, and that was requesting a 10% voluntary reduction, and the second was in, recently, it was in July, and it was requesting, increasing it to 15%. This applied to 50 counties, including Sacramento County, but it was not mandatory. So, this was voluntary reductions that is being requested, but the state is actively monitoring this, the situation. As a result of that, Regional Water Authority issued two resolutions. Regional Water Authority is a JPA of 24 water districts and affiliates in the area that work regionally to improve water supply, water availabilities, and just make sure that we work together in the region for great water supply. So, what they did in response to the emergency order was issue a resolution in May that said to its member agencies, which City of Folsom is a member agency, San Juan Water District, EID, regional water districts are all a member, asking the member agencies to reduce voluntarily by 10%, and also to shift from surface water to groundwater, and also pull, reduce the amount of surface water diversions off the American River. City of Folsom does not have the ability to go to groundwater, we're surface water only, but conjunctive use in the region is a region issue, and conjunctive use is when it's a dry year, you try to pull more from groundwater than you normally would, and then in wet years, you pull more from surface water and let the groundwater recharge. So, it's a balance within the region. So, we're all part of that, and that's what Regional Water Authority's first resolution and second resolution has asked for. The only difference with the second resolution was mirroring the new emergency order to go to 15%, so increase that. So, the City of Folsom has also responded to these, this, these executive orders and, and also the Regional Water Authority's resolutions, and we are actively promoting additional conservation. So, we have a, a new campaign called Folsom Saves, and it has tips and tools and resources for the, the public to, to, to look at and reduce water. We have increased our outreach and our messaging through our social media, webpage, newsletters, The Telegraph, you can read them, but a little variety of messaging that's out there, and we are also have a, a mailer that's gonna be a direct mailer, so it's gonna be going out, and it'll have tips, it'll have tools, it'll tell them where they can look for things as far as for conservation, it'll tell them how to contact the City of Folsom. Because really, what we want is we want them to know, we want our citizens to know, we're here to help. So, we have a water conservation department that's dedicated to getting the resources and into, and the information into our residents' hands, and so we have Waterwise House Calls, where we'll have personalized assessments of individual properties and give them customized tips, strategies. We have rebates, so free money, so we can get discounts and, and rebates on controllers, irrigation upgrades. We have Drop Counter, which is an app so that it'll give you your water use, it'll allow you to track your water use, and it'll notify you of leaks, it'll give you tips, and, you know, simple things can make a big difference. Reducing your watering to two to three days a week makes a huge difference. You know, your, your grass doesn't need all that water all the time. Just even reducing it a couple minutes each cycle is, is huge. Leaks in toilets and more efficient plumbing, so we really want to get that information out to the public, and so that's what the, the campaign that we have in response to this, to really encourage conservation and try to get us to that 15% reduction. And as we move forward, there's a lot going on. We have weekly coordination meetings with the Bureau of Reclamation, so the Bureau of Reclamation are the ones that operate the dam, so we have weekly meetings with them to assess what the situation is. They're targeting, trying to keep as much water in the, in the reservoir as possible, and they're saying that they'd like to see at least 200,000 acre feet in there in October, so that's, it's gonna be a, a, an important piece to that. And also, they aren't taking anything off the table. They're still looking at emergency pump operations, which was a situation we had in 2014, and we're all actively promoting conservation, and so it's, it's, it's something that's very important, and I know the city manager wanted to speak a little bit at this point.
Yeah, thank you, Todd. I really just wanted to add that we're taking the regional and statewide drought situation very seriously, as I know the whole city council does. Under Folsom's municipal code, and as your city manager, I have the authority to determine water conservation stages and issue mandatory water restrictions when warranted. We are closely monitoring water levels on a daily basis at this point, as well as our community's progress with the voluntary conservation measures. We always seek to do the right thing regarding frankly, Earth's most precious resource, regardless of our water rights or anything else. We may very well need to consider moving to mandatory water conservation stages in the near future in Folsom, and we will continue to keep the council and the public informed because things are changing quickly.
Thank you. Agreed. So, that concludes the information I wanted to share, and so I would just ask that the city council approve Resolution 10669. And so I would just ask that the city council approve Resolution 10669, which supports the Regional Water Authority Resolution 2021-03 Regarding Extreme Drought Conditions of 2021 and Authorize the City Manager to Implement Any Future Reduction Requirements. With one note, the resolution has two small typos, so it will be revised to not have typos. So that would be the actual resolution that would be executed, so.
Todd, do we have any measure of what, well, first of all, did the, the governor or RWA's recommendation make a comparison to, was it the reference to last year? Or what, what was the baseline year?
The baseline year.
As an example, when we were talking about the 20%, that went back to a, a calendar year, which I think was 2013.
2014, yeah.
So is this 10, having moved to 15%, is that based on last year?
Oh, on usage, yes. Overall usage from this year, from last year to this year, correct.
And do we know where we are so far with the voluntary reductions to this point by comparison to last?
Honestly, not great. It's, it's pretty, pretty much tracking, you know, they're up and down every day. But I looked at our trends on our treatment plan, and they're, they're pretty much staying about the same. So we really haven't seen a whole lot of reduction.
So we haven't seen 10%, and we certainly haven't seen 15%.
We have not seen 10% and 15%. We had a few days where we had seen some reductions, but then went back up after about five days. So we are pretty much where we were last year.
Okay, and that's kind of an unusual situation, because normally, when these requests have been made, residents have stepped up, and we saw reductions pretty much right away.
Yeah, I think that, you know, Todd and I sat as recently as, you know, just today, honestly, running through those numbers. And we're not seeing them budge. And, you know, it's like, people wanna do the right thing, but when it's, you know, voluntary, it feels, you know, it's a, it's a little looser. And so that's why I wanted to kind of pre-signal that, you know, we're getting awfully close to needing some mandatory restrictions to, to get those numbers to budge. And that would mean things like limiting the number of days of the week that you can water. They're spelled out in the code, and, you know, there's a stage two, there's a stage three. So we'll take a closer look at that. But I just didn't want the opportunity to go by tonight without, you know, about a voluntary item, without saying, I don't think this is where this is gonna end. I think, I think we're gonna be at mandatory pretty quickly here.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Agreed. Mrs. Aquino, do you have any questions on this item?
No, no questions, thank you.
I have some questions, too. One, when it comes to drought, and I was trying to find this information out. Have droughts historically been cyclical, where there's a, like a serious drought year, then it, then it ramps up, and then we have a heavy rain? Have we, is there a trending when it comes to years of drought, followed by years of improvement with rain?
Yeah, I think on my graph, that was, if I can fly back here real fast. If you noted, the last 2014, 15 was, was, was kind of a multi-year drought, and it was one of the worst, one of the more severe droughts that I think we've had. Then you'll notice that 2018, 19 is the graph, I think there's a pointer here. 2018, 19, there's a lot of precipitation up there. So it does go in cycles, as far as the gradient of them all, how extreme they are. It's still up to science, I guess, or history, or the almanac, or meteorologists. But they do go through cycles, and we see wet years, we see dry years. I think that's really important, why we wanted to work regionally with conjunctive use and balance groundwater, surface water, and, and work through those cycles, for sure.
And then I'm not sure, I was, I've been reading on droughts, and I'm not sure if it was the City of Folsom that I saw it. But is there a service that the City of Folsom offers residents that they, that we, we can call the city and have them come out to our home and check the water?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, can you tell me a little more about that? I'm not sure if I read it was Folsom, but, okay.
Yes, Don Smith is a wonderful resource.
Yeah.
So we have a Water Conservation Division, Don Smith's supervisor for that. And we call it a Waterwise House Call. So we'll, we have a, let me go back to the page here. So the contact information's up in the upper left. So there's phone number, and this is for the Water Conservation Department specifically. Phone number, email, even the website. And we'll come out, we will even, if need be, set up little cones to check sprinkler patterns. We will look at what possible leaks you might have. I mean, it's very hands-on, very one-on-one, and will help you through understanding what, what your controller, how to even program your controller. Because a lot of times, that's set by the developer, and it stays there forever. So it, there's a lot of different things they look at that really help with water conservation.
Yeah, that's a great benefit.
Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out.
I'll take advantage of that soon.
Mr. Chalmers.
Good. I took advantage of changing my toilet, so just want to continue that, you know, for the low usage. You know, Todd, I hear you, I'm following you, what you are saying. But if I meet with any local resident, 10 out of 6 is saying they are so much concerned about the water in our town. The simplest in this, again, the simplest thing they are saying it is, I'm driving on the Folsom Dam, there is no water. That's it. I mean, I'm just giving you the, you know, residents' perspective. We represent the residents here. I totally hear our, our, you know, dialogue of, we have Regional Water Sanitation, JPAs, and, you know, Bureau of Reclamation and all those. But the common consensus is, we are in danger. Of course, I hope they can act on the 10% and 15% reduction to help us. Maybe it helps. I, I did see the recent Q and A, I still haven't gone through the, all the details. It's important, right now, we have 250,000 acre feet of water out there in the lake. And some of the agencies who are using it, now they are transitioning to the groundwater. Folsom doesn't have the groundwater. So we are going to use, we are probably one of the primary users of the 250,000 acre feet. Not sure how much we use on a monthly basis. You know, something, some statistics help the people that way. It's not that, that much concern, because as you see the previous one, the cycles comes. In 2018, the water was there. Right? 2021, water is here. It cycles comes, but it is not in danger. And the same time, people ask us, stop the Folsom South constructions, do that, do this. It is, it is a little bit frustrating, even for all of us as a city administration. Maybe clarifying that, yes, we have enough water, and the other users of that water now transitioning from Folsom Lake to the ground. Since we don't have it, we are going to use it. On an average, we are using 2,000 acre feet per month.
Councilmember Chalmers, we have, as you alluded to, and I thought this would be a good opportunity to share it with others who might be wondering the same thing. If you go to folsom.ca.us/water, F-A-Q-S, like FACS, Frequently Asked Questions with an S on the end, you will find a very robust document that explains just that in what we hope are layperson's terms. Because the bottom line is that we, you know, absolutely have the water infrastructure and supply and longstanding water rights to take us all the way through build-out. But I understand that people are concerned. And so we have taken the time to try to explain that, and we will be pushing it out across our various communications platforms as well. So I know you mentioned it, so I just thought I'd share exactly where people could find that. Because I, I think it's a helpful tool, it's just being as transparent as possible.
Exactly. You know, the more we can do, I'm not questioning you, Todd, it is more of the residents are listening it. We do have the water, and it is a matter of how people are using it and other agencies are using it. Not everyone using Folsom Lake water at this situation. They are going to the ground. Hopefully, they can release it. I know our communications department is going to push more and more, you know. More communication is always good that way. We want to make sure, at least those six people out of 10, they can calm down. And the same time, we want them to help us to get some, you know, conservation, 10% or 15%. With that, thank you so much for, you know, all these. It's good.
This might be a good time to remind people that the City of Folsom, on a daily, on a daily basis, uses less water than what evaporates from the surface of the lake. We haven't talked about that little factoid in a while, but that's, that's the circumstance.
That's good, yeah. Yeah, but thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
It's good.
You need to put a big cone over the lake and catch that evaporation.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this particular topic? I don't have any speaker cards, okay?
Oh, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'd like to make a comment about this. This is Patty Solzine. And the presenter mentioned something about rebates. And I was wondering about, we used to have something called Cash for Grass, and, and we don't have it. And now you have basically, you get to spend, I, I've actually signed up for it. I'm actually, my front right side of my yard, I turned off all my sprinklers. I have some trees and bushes, I'm doing a drip line there. And on my backside yard, I'm doing the same thing, killing all my grass. And I get basically, if I spend like $100 on the drip line and all tapping all the sprinkler heads, I get 50% back. So it's like $50. I get back for, you know, trying to save water. And I don't think, you know, it's almost not even worth my time even to submit the paperwork. It'd be, be more of an incentive for people that they're doing what I'm doing and killing some of the grass off to save water.
Okay. Good, good comment, thank you. Maybe the city manager could reconsider what circumstances led us to have a Cash for Grass program in the past, and if you bring that forward to us.
If I'm recalling correctly, and maybe Todd can help me out here. I think Cash for Grass was a state program, and, you know, I believe it has ended. But it is something that maybe we could reevaluate and figure out how to do it in the future, you know, kind of re-up it. I, you know, Todd, is it still, I feel like it's gone away, but maybe that's not correct.
So in 2014, I think, when it was consecutive dry years, the state did have one. We had one that we also added to it. So we kind of, you know, I don't know about doubled it, but we actually put our part in. And we had a program that lasted, I think, a couple of years, maybe two or three years. And then the cycle went higher, and, and that program lost its momentum as far as any interest and things like that. So we, we terminated it. So it is something we've had in the past, it did piggyback onto the state. But then nothing has come out that I've seen with the state. I used the state one at my house back in the day, so that was nice. But, so I think it's something we could look at if, if the council or city manager would like us to, for sure, so.
Yeah, it's something we can look into, for sure. And certainly, people are making that swap. I, I feel awfully close to making the swap in my own backyard, I'm about over it here. So, yeah, understood.
Very good, all right, cool. Did you want to comment on this? Come on down. You gotta come to the microphone, so everybody can hear you.
So again, I grew up here.
What's your name?
Denise Atterbury.
Thank you very much.
I have a business owner here, real estate agent, been here since 1977. My family owns farmland down in the Cowchilla area. I just wanted to, I think water is so important. I think the new developments need the fake grass. Population is growing, it's inevitable, it's going to happen. I think policing is good to watch when there's a leak. Sometimes I see leaks in the roads, you know, people don't, they're busy. They have their families, they're traveling, they're working. To call the district, who do we call, all this research. Maybe someone, to pay someone to do that. And why, the water is sitting in the lake just evaporating. I was seeing something about the Indians, how they, natural is sometimes better for the fish and our food. I mean, that's our food resource. To survive, we need water, all right? Simple, that's pretty much it.
That is the bottom line, for sure.
In 1977, I remember our grass being, I have pictures of our grass being completely dead, right? We just didn't water it, because you don't.
Yeah.
I do wanna share, if I could, that, you know, we are about to launch a whole public information campaign about very specific things you can do to save water. And we do have a, you know, a phone number, you know, outreach methods that, you know, you can reach out and say, you know, I'm seeing water waste over here, or, you know, you can actually report that. And, and I also, go ahead.
Why is it happening now in July? It should be happening in March, April, May.
We have tools for you to report that kind of stuff already. We are trying to step up the game.
Yeah, it's not, it's not brand new. It's just, we're again, I just meant we're pushing it out again, because there is that opportunity. And I also wanted to mention, though, South of 50 homes are among the most water-efficient in the state, honestly. So, you know, the way, the way they're being built and the way they're being landscaped are highly water-efficient, which is the good news.
And I've watched a flood, I lived in Rancho Cordero right there, where the, always get washed away. And I've seen low, high, all of it, so whatever we can do.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, any additional comments or questions from the council, or I will entertain a motion. YK, anything else?
I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Rosario?
I don't have anything else. I'll move to approve Resolution 10669.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalmers.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. Okay, on to item number 11.
Old Business, item number 11, Resolution Number 10673, A Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Proposition 218 Notice for Proposed Five-Year Rate Adjustment for Solid Waste.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Marie McKee, General Services Manager for the Public Works Department. And I'm here again tonight to discuss the solid waste rate study. And this evening, it'll be abbreviated version of what we saw two weeks ago. I'll start with a brief overview of SB 1383, followed by the rate study methodology, and then the proposed rates with a few minor changes from what we saw a couple of weeks ago. And then finally, the next steps in request for a Prop 218 Notice Authorization. So the reason that we are here talking about a rate study is due to SB 1383, or California Short-lived Climate Pollutant Reduction Strategy. This is not a solid waste regulation. However, it is a regulation intended to reduce air pollution, primarily methane gas from the environment. And removing organic waste from the landfill is the methodology that the state has chosen to address the pollution issue. So this, this regulation comes with mandated programs that will significantly increase the cost of our operation, primarily the collection of residential organic waste from every household and business on a weekly basis. We did do a comprehensive rate study in 2019. And at that time, the costs of this regulation were unknown. And so we had to move forward based on other impacts to the solid waste industry and the condition of our fund at that time. We had to move forward with a rate increase regardless of not knowing what the costs of this program were gonna be and not being able to include them. So here we are, three years before the end of that, Prop 218 noticing period, requesting another one. The regulations were finally completed in November of 2020, which gives us just a little over a year to plan and collect funding for the programs. And if we were to ignore this law and decide we weren't going to comply, the fines are up to $10,000 a day, and that's $10,000 per day per violation. So even just one violation could be as much as $3.6 million in a year. So to start the rate study, we first needed to review the status of the solid waste fund to verify that the fund could not support the new programs. And they're quite expensive, so the fund could not support that, and we needed to move forward. So our first step was to take the comprehensive rate model that we established in 2019, that allocated all the expenses and revenues to the different programs, and update that with current expenses. And then we adjusted the rates to meet the new obligations. When we did this, we found that the rate increases with, that would be required to meet the new expenses using just rates alone would be extremely expensive. So we also applied some mitigation strategies and a 1383 surcharge to identify on the actual utility bill what the charges are there for. So the base year in the rate model was set to fiscal year '21, which, at the time that we updated it, it was a projection. Then the SB 1383 expenses for the new programs were added, and those expenses are shown on the screen. The first line, the startup cost, the $2.3 million, that is pretty much going to be incurred in the first couple of years. That's things like new trucks, new equipment to actually pick up the organic waste separately. And the rest of the expenses after the first line are on. And the rest of the expenses after the first line are ongoing operational expenses that will continue year after year and escalate year after year. And since we were embarking on the rate study process, we also included other expenses that were not known at the time of the previous rate study, but that we can now predict. So those include an electric refuse truck pilot program as well as increased landfill fees. Currently, we are on a contract for reduced landfill fees, which saves us a significant amount of money. That contract expires at the end of this fiscal year. And we've reached out to the county and anticipate an increase of about $600,000 per year in just landfill fees. So the mitigation measures that were used to minimize the amount of the rate increase were an internal loan, $5 million with a five-year payback period. That just helps to bridge the gap for the initial upfront costs of implementing new programs and getting started. And we also are proposing charges for all hazardous waste and bulky waste pickups. Those programs are completely subsidized right now by rates. And by charging a small amount for each pickup, we would recover some revenue from the actual users of those services. The amount that we are asking is just $25 for bulky waste and $15 for household hazardous waste. Those are far below the cost because they still are subsidized in recognition that there is a community benefit to providing these programs. And then finally, the last one is charging for all additional green and recycling cans after the first ones. The current rates include up to two green waste and recycling cans bundled in with the one rate. The problem with that is that green waste and recycling, the cost of processing those materials over the years has increased drastically and is actually now more expensive than landfilling it, but we have to do it. And so for that reason, we want to encourage reduction in producing those materials. And then if you do have extra green waste and recycling, we want to collect the cost of providing that extra service. And then in addition to the mitigation measures, we have a 1383 surcharge that is going to be a separate line item on the bill, or is proposed to be a separate line item on the bill, that would cover the cost of weekly collection for the organic waste, which is the largest expense of all the programs with 1383. That surcharge would cover collection vehicles, drivers, extra containers. We would actually need to spend quite a bit on extra containers. There are several communities within Folsom that currently do not have green waste containers because they don't generate a lot of yard waste. So we need to purchase containers for all of those communities. In addition, we have residents throughout the city who elect not to participate in yard waste or recycling. And with this law, every single household in the city has to have a blue can and they have to have a, an organic scan. And they have to use them. It would be illegal when this is implemented to throw those organics into the garbage. So we have to buy additional containers to distribute to everyone who doesn't have them now. And then the processing cost increases because processing green waste that's just yard waste is much less difficult than processing yard waste mixed with food waste. So once we add that food waste, those costs go up. And then the law also dictates a lot of education and outreach efforts, which is actually a good thing because following the education and outreach, we are mandated to do inspection and monitoring. And with that inspection and monitoring, if people are not following the laws, they are, there are mandated fines that we must enforce. So through our education and outreach efforts, the goal will be to minimize the use of fines to get compliance and instead educate people on the benefits of using the program. So with all of those inputs, these are the rates that are proposed tonight and the differences from the rates that you saw two weeks ago. So based on feedback and the conversation that I heard two weeks ago, I extended the surcharge for five, for the full five years of this Prop 218 noticing period. That made a couple of significant changes in the rates and the fund balance. So the rates increase. Let me see, is this the pointer? I'm not sure where the pointer is. The rates increase more quickly in the first three increases than the initial proposal. So we meet our cost of service a little more quickly. And that is because of this third year of the surcharge. In addition, the 215% increases here remain because those were already approved and already in place to cover existing operations. But what I was able to do by extending the surcharge was lower the proposed increases at the end of the five-year period. And that resulted in a final bill for a typical household of $3.50 less than what I originally presented. So a little more upfront, but in the long run, it's less. The other benefit to using the surcharge to collect the money as, as we actually need it is that the fund balance only drops, is predicted to drop to 2.7 million, which is still not a huge fund balance for this size operation. But in the initial proposal, it dropped to 1.1 million, which is very concerning with the fluctuations that can happen in our expenses. And then I've included the three extra years here and noted when the new rate study occurs. So these projections can change quite a bit. And I want to point out that it looks like toward the end here, we are just making a ton of money. But in the two years following this one, we have $10.5 million in capital expenses due to vehicles that are due to be replaced at that time. So the fund balance that you see here takes into account a variable capital expense along with the operating reserve. And then, of course, we have to go back to the, how do we compare charts? And I have two charts for you today. This first one is the rates without adjustments for food waste. The communities shown here are not doing food waste yet, and they have not adjusted their rates yet for the new law. And so you can see we're a little bit above the average, but we're right in, right in the same range of other communities. And then the next chart shows rates with food waste. So the communities shown either are already recycling food waste or they are in the planning phases, but they have adjusted their rates for the new food waste collection. So of all of these communities, the average is 42.67. Are the increase, the rate that I show here for Folsom is actually not the first increase that's proposed. This is in July of next year. And I chose that date because that's our target date for full implementation of food waste. So I didn't want to misrepresent this by going with our first increase, which would look artificially low. So another thing I wanted to point out is that although the 42.67 includes all of these communities, some of them are still in their planning phases. The average for communities that are already recycling food waste, who have already implemented their programs is $46.37. So our 49, I believe it's 49.75, is within the range of the average of those who are already doing it. The other thing I would point out is that the City of Davis, in researching this, they advertise their rate increases in a way that I think is appropriate, especially in this situation where it's such a moving target. When they put their rates online for their five-year rate adjustments, they characterize them as maximum rate adjustments. And the solid waste department comes back each year to give an update on the progress and whether or not that full rate adjustment is needed or if some of it can be held back. And that's certainly something that Folsom can do as well. And then if the council decides to authorize a Prop 218 notice tonight, the next step would be to initiate a public outreach campaign. So there are some public outreach requirements that we must do. And I have those here. We have to provide a rate adjustment notice to all customers. That would be direct mailed to all, all customers, residential and commercial, who pay rates. That would initiate a 45-day protest period, which would end with a public hearing on December 14th. The new rates would then become effective on January 1st. Now, in addition to the mandatory public outreach, we would like to do like the last time and provide as much outreach as possible to maximize the community engagement. So we've already started that process a little bit. This meeting was published in the e-newsletter that went out on Friday. We also posted it on social media. It went out on Facebook and Twitter. The graphic you see there is the Facebook post. It was on both social media sites yesterday morning. And then it was also prominently displayed on the news section of the city website. So we're already starting to get the word out even just of the proposal. And then we plan to utilize the city newsletters. I've already met with the communications group and started putting together an outreach plan so that we can reach as many people as possible. We'll continue to post this in newsletters, including the e-newsletter and printed newsletters. We'll utilize utility bill notices. We also can push out notices through our waste collection app where residents sign up for reminders for their garbage day and they can see their calendar, schedule bulky waste pickups and hazardous waste pickups. That app can push out messages. And we'll continue to use social media. And then hold a community meeting in person. So those who prefer to come and express themselves to us in person will have the opportunity to do that. We will also provide an easy way to protest on the Prop 218 notice directly so that we are giving everyone every opportunity possible to share their, their thoughts on this increase. And then, of course, the public hearing is the final outreach. So with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Okay. All right. From the council, any questions? We've talked about this a great deal, but.
Not necessarily a question. Well, I do, actually, I do have, I do have a question. I have two questions. What is supposed to happen to pieces of wood? Where's that supposed to go?
The organic spin, as long as they're small enough.
Now, where is it supposed to go now? I'm talking about things like pallets.
Oh, pallets? We can pick those up on the bulky waste pickup or they can be put into a dumpster. So we have dumpster rentals available. Once, once the new law goes into effect, because we can pick those up on bulky waste too. But once the new law goes into effect, we will have to modify our bulky waste program to also pick up organics separately. So that hasn't been all.
And separate, separate question, then I have just a comment. What's supposed to happen to styrofoam?
Garbage.
Even if it's large amounts of styrofoam?
Even large amounts of styrofoam, as long as they will fit in your garbage can and fall freely when it's tipped. They should go in the garbage can.
I'm asking this about a business application.
Okay, they can go in the dumpster.
Okay, what if they, what if they have already completely filled the dumpster on the day that the trash was picked up? I just got a text message.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
They can call and we can do an extra pickup of the dumpster and we can usually complete that in the same day. And there is a fee for it, but we just send the truck back over and put it on their regular utility bill.
Okay. All right. And I just, this is really just a comment. There was some stuff that showed up today on social media that goes back a couple of years to when the rate study was, was completed a couple of years ago. And I just want to clarify that much of the information that was posted there today on social media is incorrect information. And much of that misinformation goes back to the fact that the state had not figured out what the regulations were going to be until the end of last year. So to suggest that the City of Folsom was ignoring this because certain individuals asked the question over and over and over again, the same answer was given over and over and over again. We do not know, because we do not yet know what the requirements are going to be that the state will finally land on. And, you know, and even once they decided what the regulations were going to be at the end of last year, then you can't immediately figure out what the cost is going to be because we're now looking at new mechanisms, not knowing what was going to happen to the organics. Is there going to be a market for us to eliminate, to get rid of that waste, knowing that there's tipping fees involved in all of it? So I'm just putting that out there so that if you see stuff on social media that makes it look like the City of Folsom has not been paying attention, it's absolutely, positively not accurate.
Thank you, Councilmember Howell. Yeah, we, we did communicate that over and over and over again in multiple commission, council meetings and community meetings. You know, we, we did not, we knew it was coming, but we, we were given no specifics. And so, and we said that we would be back before you, and we are back before you.
Okay. I'll remind everybody that there is almost never any audience at the utility commission meeting. It can be interesting. You should go. Mrs. Aquino, any, any questions?
No questions. I would, I would just say that I'm, I'm, I'm still in favor of going from three free bulky waste pickups down to one. I realize that we can put the rate in there and then not charge for it, but I, I just think it's going to be quite a shock to people to, to learn that they now have to pay for something that they were able to have three free per year. So that's it.
Okay. YK, any questions?
No, thank you for adding that, you know, two charts. I, I'm more on outreach and putting the facts in front of residents. I hear you. I listed down all the things you said it. Still may not be enough. I, I, that's what, you know, see whether what we can do. And you can use us, council members. We should be the one, you know, in our areas. And also, I think some of the COVID type of outreach we have done, you know, I, I highly encourage whatever the most we can do, the outreach in a facts-based, that'd be great. And also on your first slide, I didn't see that. You said the pollution, but all the fires on the state came into this so aggressive. The fires is also, you know, acting on this. And the more fights are coming out from these gases as well.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. That, that is part of it. They're fighting pollution because pollution is causing climate change, which is contributing to the wildfires. So it's all connected.
It's all connected, you know, Californians, right? You know, at least doing this kind of our job, at least we can bring a little bit on that pollution to bring the fires down. But thank you. It's, it's a good presentation.
Thank you.
Rosario?
Thank you, Marie. I don't have questions.
Okay, great. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this? Come on down. Good evening.
My name is Muriel Brownstein. Did I read that correctly? That in seven years, the rate is going to go from $34 to $67? Did I read that correctly?
I think what the chart said was that in five years, it was going to go to 60. And then the others were just projections based on continuing escalation of costs. Okay, all right. I guess I'll bring it back to the council. If there's any other comments or questions anybody would like to make, or I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution 10673.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, I wanted to add a comment. I wanted to add a comment, or is it too late?
If you'll introduce yourself, you can absolutely make a comment.
Okay, I will. You started voting before I could say anything. This is Patty Soulsby again. I just wanted to say that you're talking about all this social media. There's people who don't have Facebook or even know what Twitter is. And then there's also, I'm concerned about the low-income people because you're raising up the garbage cans, the green waste. My mother's on fixed income. She has two green waste containers because she has a really huge tree in her backyard, which even the two green waste doesn't really keep up. So we back, we bag up the extras and just wait for the next, the next week when it's due. and just wait for the next, the next week when it's due. So I was just concerned about that and raising all these rates. And I know there's a public comment period, but is there a way to not raise up all these? You only, you know what I mean? Because you're also talking about, which I did not know, is you, you're doing like, we only have three times a year for you guys to come out to our house to pick up large items, whatever you call that, big dump days. It used to be four, now it's three, and now you want to drop it down to one. I think going from three to one is, you know, I'm okay with three to, I mean, that's like once a year. I'm okay with three to two, but then you're also saying you want to charge us.
Mm-hmm.
Where in the past you never charged.
Right, right. Thank, thank you for those comments. Madam City Manager, the purpose of our vote tonight is to start the public process of
Exactly.
Commentary on these things.
If you choose to pass tonight's resolution, it is giving us direction to move forward with a very comprehensive public outreach process that is required by Proposition 218, and, you know, we kind of take it, I think, even further than we, we need to. And I kind of wanted to return to some of the residents', you know, appropriate concerns at the beginning of her comments. We have been working really hard to do, just as we did with the first set of rate increases, communicate in both, for lack of better terms, kind of old-school and new-school ways. So we have everything right down to an actual document that goes to each home that you can just pull out a flyer and fill out. You can hand-deliver it to City Hall if you want. We're going to have in-person community meetings. We're trying to offer opportunities to people that aren't necessarily connected to technology to really tune in and then weigh in, because this just starts that process.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll to initiate this process?
Councilmembers Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalmers?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. Okay, please call the next item.
Next item is old business item, number 12, Resolution Number 10575, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom declaring its intent to initiate procedures to transition, transition from at-large elections to district-based elections pursuant to California Elections Code Section 10010 and authorize-related actions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the members of the City Council. Stephen Wong, City Attorney. This is the second time City Council has considered a resolution of intention to transition to by-district election under the California Voting Rights Act. And I'd like to take a quick minute to recap the CVRA timeline since the last time council considered this item. The CVRA timelines were suspended by Governor Newsom during the COVID-19 public health emergency on March 20th, 2020, including the 45-day safe harbor, which means that no lawsuits could be filed against the city during 45 days of receiving a demand letter. So that 45-day safe harbor was also suspended. The city received a demand letter on October 30th, 2020, after the CVRA timelines had been suspended. So there was really no need for the City Council to take any action at that time. But the City Council nonetheless considered a resolution of intention on January 12, 2021, and directed staff to engage in public outreach and also to solicit public feedback and input. The city was served with a CVRA lawsuit on January 20, 2021. Because the CVRA timeline had been suspended, when the city received the demand letter, the 45-day timeframe, timeline never started. And hence, the city was successful in getting the lawsuit dismissed on March 17, 2021. The suspension of the timeline was lifted as of July 1, 2021, and that now started the 45-day safe harbor timeframe. At the January 12, 2021 council meeting, the council instructed staff to engage in public outreach. Staff published CVRA information on the city's website, mailed over 30,000 informational mailers to Folsom residents. Of the 474 feedback received from Folsom residents, 295 were in favor of keeping the current at-large election system in place, 154 in favor of switching to by-district election, and 25 were undecided. For the benefit of the public, Folsom currently has an at-large system of electing our council members. That means all five council members are elected by voters of the city at large. It doesn't matter where the voters live or where the candidates live. Each council member serves a four-year term. The terms are staggered. Two council members elected at one election, and three council members elected at the following election. But once elected, each council member represents all citizens throughout the city. The proposal is to transition to a district-based election system where only registered voters residing in a district are eligible to run and be council member of that district. Only registered voters residing in the candidate's district can vote for that candidate. Each term remains four years, and no current council member's term will be cut short due to the transition. This is all due to the California Voting Rights Act, which prohibits at-large election system if the system impairs the ability of a protected class to elect candidates of their choice or to influence the outcome of an election. Protected classes defined as race, color, or language minority. The California legislature has set a very low threshold for plaintiffs to sue and win a CVRA lawsuit. All they have to do is to demonstrate that racially polarized voting exists in their jurisdiction. There is no need to show discriminatory intent, no need to show a history of discrimination. Because of the very low threshold, no city has prevailed in defending a CVRA lawsuit. Racially polarized voting under the statute means that there is a difference in the choice of candidates preferred by minority voters and the choice of candidates preferred by the rest of the electorate. This phenomenon is shown in every CVRA lawsuit. If the plaintiff wins, the city has to pay plaintiff's attorney's fees, expert fees, and court costs. The city, of course, has to pay our own defense costs, and the court gets to draw district boundaries with input from plaintiff's attorney and their consultants, leading to potentially a total loss of local control over how district boundaries are drawn. Thus far, all cities attempted to defend a CVRA lawsuit have lost. Some paid millions of their taxpayers' money and still had to switch to district-based election. Some of those cities are listed on this slide. The Santa Monica case is still pending with the California Supreme Court, which ordered that the appellate court decision be published, and hence, everything remains status quo. Over 126 cities have switched to district election due to the threat of a very costly CVRA lawsuit, including locally the cities of Citrus Heights, Roseville, Elk Grove, and the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. The process to switch to district election takes five public hearings. Two public hearings to receive public input and discuss district composition, followed by two public hearings on proposed district maps, and finally, a public hearing to introduce an ordinance that establishes district-based election. The exact timeframe for those public hearings cannot yet be determined because the 2020 census data is not available until after September. Thus, the public hearing dates will be determined and announced once the 2020 census data becomes available. So to recap, there is no history of discrimination and no evidence of discriminatory intent in how Folsom voters elect their council members. Because the city has received a demand letter, the city has 45-day safe harbor from July 1 to adopt a resolution of intention in order to avoid a costly lawsuit. The decision to transition to district is primarily based on financial considerations to protect taxpayers' resources, to safeguard the city's financial future, and more importantly, to retain local control over how our districts will be drawn. With that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I will ask the city council, because we have discussed this many times. If you have specific questions only at this point, otherwise I'll open public comments. So YK, anything, questions?
Yeah, mine is, if you don't mind, sir, if you can go back to the dollar amount on Santa Monica. It was not clear. You might have said it, I might have missed it. They are seeking $22 million?
That is correct, Councilmember Chalmers, Mr. Mayor and the members of the commission. Santa Monica has incurred $5-plus million in their own cost in defending the CVRA lawsuit. The plaintiffs are demanding $22-plus million in their own attorney's fees and costs if Santa Monica loses at the Supreme Court.
At the Supreme Court.
So it's about $27, $30 million.
So they already spent $5 million on...
Correct.
I just want that clarity. Thank you. It is total $27 million at this point. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Any other questions, Rosario?
No questions.
Sarah?
Yes, I have one question. Thank you. Steve, if we were to indicate our intention to transition to by-district elections and the decision, the Santa Monica decision comes down from the Supreme Court, or something happens to kind of, let's just say, blow a hole into this CVRA thing, could we go back to by, at-large elections at some point? Once you go to by-district, can you, can you then reverse and go back to at-large?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the commission. That's an excellent question. The, the, the true answer, of course, depends on exactly what the Supreme Court says. But presumably, if they do away with this very one-sided legislation where no city has ever won, then I don't think we will be the only one. I think many cities would be contemplating switching back.
Anything else? Carrie? All right, great. Why don't we open public comment? We have a number of speakers that would like to address the council on this topic.
The first speaker is Donald Burst, followed by Tom Rupp.
Good evening. I'll try to be very brief here, and I'll leave out some of my comments, which basically had to do with continuing fraudulent assessments in the LNL district. All of the installments in the engineer's report are in violation of the law. There are no resolutions by the city council to set up installments, and that's one of the requirements of the law. It was set up by the LNL manager and SCI, and the intent was to defraud taxpayers. I am in favor of district elections because that way there will be someone who knows the street that I live on and who will answer when I call and say there's something wrong with these LNL assessments, or the garbage hasn't picked up, or whatever. The way it is now, this is the most unresponsive city council I have ever experienced in my life. So I would be very strongly in favor, not necessarily for the reasons given there, but because I would like to have a representative who will represent me and my neighbors. Thank you.
Good job. Tom Rupp?
I'm requesting three minutes and 30 seconds, if I may, so my tongue won't go fast from my brain.
Make it worth it.
Cool. Thank you. I'm Tom Rupp, 22-year resident of Folsom. I'd like to speak about this resolution. I have a difficult time comprehending the logic behind this intent. Why is this procedure being initiated? Are those who back this change thinking that certain racial groups have not been fairly represented? Can a council member of Asian descent truly represent a white Folsom man? I assert he can. Can a white Folsom man truly represent a black Folsom woman? I say he can. Can a woman of Hispanic descent be fair and just as a councilwoman? I say she can. What is provably unfair about at-large elections? Do we currently seat an unfair council? At the time, the Democratic Club's petition stated, quote, "The city's diversity is not reflected in the current city council," unquote. Is that still true? By what standard? If it isn't true, then why do we need to change? Is the motivation behind this an attempt at racial quota in our politics? If so, with approximately 65% of our 75,000-plus citizens listed as white, I'd say we are currently abiding by fair racial quota. Approximately 16% of Folsom is Asian, approximately 4% is black. Is the assumption that the history of the Folsom City Council has been one of bias and prejudice? Is it impossible to ferry, to render local governance unless we have every racial group proportionally represented in a five-member council? Is fairness rooted solely in one's ethnic heritage? Or skin color? How can a person who lives in Old Town somehow be unable to represent the entire city? I don't get that. Are they that self-serving? Are they that prejudiced? Are they that unable to do so? Is that the assumption? Is there a racial quota mentality behind this? Proponents say, quote, "Other cities have district-based elections," unquote. Yes, there are other cities who don't. How's that convincing? Proponents of district-based elections say, quote, "Other cities that fought this have lost and are required to pay large legal fees," unquote. That sort of sounds like extortion to me, or a threat. You know, it'd be really terrible if something happened to your business. Go ahead, pass a resolution, or be prepared to pay disregarding our, our fears. People don't take kindly to the perception of being bullied or ignored. I'm in favor of at-large elections, and I'm not scaring anybody who favors district elections. I ask that the favor be returned. Attorney Scott Rafferty wrote in a letter on October 20th last year, 28th last year, to our city clerk, and he stated, quote, "The legacy of at-large elections deprives California of the natural diversity of leadership that our democracy requires," unquote. And I'll encourage everyone to look, take a good look around, and ask yourself this question. How is our current city council, elected by an at-large election, depriving Folsom of its diversity? How is our current Folsom City Council, elected by at-large election, depriving Folsom of its diversity? Thank you.
Next speaker is Joan Normington, followed by Bernard Dooley. Oh, I'm sorry. Muriel Brownstein, then Bernard Dooley.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joan Normington. At times, I will be observing these meetings as a member of the Legal Women Voters Sacramento County. But tonight, I'm speaking as a resident of Folsom. Whichever decision you make for city council elections, I strongly urge you to select proportional ranked-choice voting. This system enables more candidates to run without fear of splitting votes and ensures majority winners. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to the public hearings.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Muriel Brownstein.
Welcome again.
The headline from a recent Sacramento Bee says it all. "Folsom: What Are You Thinking?" This article is about Folsom's water issues, not about by-district city council elections, but the reasoning is the same. I was at a city council meeting about 25 years ago. The topic was annexing south of 50. The main concern was water. We were told that Folsom never intended to build on that land. We just didn't want Rancho Cordova to annex it and build right up to our borders. I was there, I heard that. We all know now that that was a lie. We all know now that that was a lie because more than ten thousand homes, Folsom homes are planned for south of fifty. And here we are, a quarter century later, and water is a very serious issue. And making the decision to annex that land so that the developers could make a huge profit years later, there was no concern for Folsom residents. I bring this up because the city council members were not held accountable then, and they are not being held accountable now with at-large elections. With by-district elections, council members will be held accountable by the constituents in their district. So I ask again, Folsom, what are you thinking by supporting by-district elections? There's no one person who is accountable to me, no one person who is looking out for my interests, and no one person I can go to with my concerns. Unfortunately, what Folsom council members are thinking about is protecting their seats and their reelection. It's my understanding that some council members live near each other and would have to run against each other if there were district elections. With district elections, more people could afford to run. A district one-fifth the size of the city would allow people to walk their district, meet their neighbors, and spend much less money. Candidates would not have to rely on Chamber of Commerce money and endorsements and developer money. I have lived in Natoma Station for thirty years and do not believe that we've ever had a council member elected for my neighborhood. When the issue of the location of the second bridge came up, it's my understanding that it was placed near Natoma Station because the logical placement connecting Oak Avenue Parkway would have put the bridge too close to a then-council member's house, and we had no representation in Natoma Station. I'll ask one more time, Folsom, what are you thinking? To date, no public agency has successfully defended a legal challenge to remain in an at-large voting system. Some cities have spent millions of dollars trying, as you already heard. Are you willing to waste that much money to preserve your seats and ensure your reelection? Transition to by-district elections have become increasingly common. Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, Roosevelt Davis, Folsom, Cordova Unified School District, and others have all transitioned to by-district elections. It is way past time for Folsom to go to by-district elections so that I, in Natoma Station, and residents of other nonrepresented neighborhoods, will have a voice in our city government. You have to decide tonight whether you're going to vote for your own interests or the interests of Folsom residents, and Folsom residents will be watching. I'd like to add one more thing about the city mailer, if I can, I might run over my time. The mailer went to thirty thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight Folsom households. They received four hundred and seventy-four replies, two hundred and ninety-five for at-large elections, hundred and fifty-four for by-district elections, and twenty-five undecided. Those two hundred and ninety-five constitute only point zero zero nine five six six seven percent of Folsom households, which is very small. In contrast, Neighborhood Elections Now collected about three hundred and twenty signatures in support of by-district elections and only had access to a tiny percentage of the city's residents. And those signatures that were collected by Neighborhood Elections Now were of all political parties and all areas of town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, I think it is fair to say that we have had passionate, longer-than-three-minute commentary on both sides of this, so if everybody going forward can try and hold it to three minutes, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bernard Dooley, followed by Mary Ann Selenovich.
Good evening. My name is Bernie Dooley, and I live in Natoma Station.
Mr. Dooley, could you pull the microphone close?
Sorry.
Thank you.
So I live in Natoma Station, and I support the by-district elections.
Excellent. All right, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Next speaker, Mary Ann Selenovich, then Cheryl Davis.
Hello again.
Hi there.
These are my thoughts on district elections. District elections are beneficial to Folsom and the council. They will have one point of contact for issues in their district. This should point out whom is really meeting with their people and who are just trying to appease them. Appeasement on the city council level results in tabling, ignoring, or shooting down ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Cheryl Davis, then Robert Dresser.
Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski, members of the city council. I'm Cheryl Davis. I'm a twelve-year resident of Empire Ranch neighborhood, and I support by-district elections. You've heard all the legal information about it from your city attorney. He did not mention the cost benefits to the city. Running district elections saves about, I think it costs forty percent of what you would pay now, or what you pay now for a citywide election. And I also wanted to add two other points from my perspective. As just a resident here, I've never lived where I haven't had a district or a city council person or a county supervisor that I could call. This was my first residence where I experienced that, because I can call Supervisor Frost, and I have, when I've asked her to advocate for homeless funding. I've called Assembly Member Kylie's office. Senator Dahl helped my son with his unemployment benefits when there was that backlog at the city due to the pandemic. And Congressman Bearer's office, I called on veterans' benefits for my mother. But when my neighborhood finally had a development in Eldorado Hills come down into our neighborhood, on the other end, the cars would just kind of blow through our neighborhood very fast, our neighbors had no one to call. So they came to council. They came a couple of times, and at one of those meetings, they requested a council member to come out and experience what they experienced. It was a different council, I think only council member Howe was around back then. All the council members just kind of looked at each other, and finally, one volunteered and came out. They felt like there was not a response to their needs without them coming to council multiple times. District elections would give them, as Muriel said, someone in their neighborhood that they could call, who lives there, that they can go to more immediately for a response.
Can I just make one comment? I went out there. I didn't contact anybody. I just went out and watched.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. To me, it's a sign of good government, because it's an accessibility issue for us, that you can get to your council most directly. The second issue, to me, it's about time. I came to California about thirty years ago, and I was remembering the other day when we were driving back from the airport, that Highway fifty was only two lanes each way with this major median strip, and it's now on its way to being seven lanes each way. Folsom has grown in that time, and you have overseen beautiful development with beautiful neighborhoods. I think it's time that, at this point with our growth, that we recognize that the issues that old Sacramento residents or old Folsom residents experience are not going to be the same as the new housing development across fifty, because I don't think they're going to have a parking issue over there. So it's time to have that district-level representation, so that someone knows that neighborhood and can respond, and give them the representation that they need. Thank you. Sorry, two seconds over.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Robert Dresser, followed by Vijay Jana Legata.
Thanks for the opportunity to address you. I did want to say in response to prior comment that until recently, for about twenty years, there have been no minority group members on the city council, and now there is, and that's a good thing. However, there's no guarantee that will happen, and I think district elections are more likely to result in possibility of minority members being elected to the city council. I think that the presumption under the California Voting Rights Act pretty clearly indicates a preference for district elections and allows the city council to have voluntary compliance thereby reducing the possibility of big attorney fees. I did agree with the city attorney's summary. I thought that was very good, although I'm not sure that, no matter what the California Supreme Court says, that cities that have gone, or counties or school districts that have gone to district elections are going to go back to at-large. I would find that dubious, but otherwise, I thought it was excellent. I do think that district elections allow for local residents to more easily get elected by other local residents who presumably are more familiar with the neighbors in their district. I think it's less expensive for someone to run in a small district rather than an entire city, when they might be more subject to the wants and needs of various lobbying groups, interest groups. I think on balance, by-district elections are more fair and responsive. I would say that this is not a question, for me, I've only been here six years, of any personal animosity towards any city council member, not at all. It's just a question of my view of good government in terms of having elections at a more simple and basic level than at-large. Now that the executive order's been rescinded, there's no need to delay consideration. I hope the city council will vote to go forward with the process. I do think city attorneys' remarks about the potential costs are very relevant. In the light of the history that no city or county or school district has successfully defended so far, this type of going to by-district elections, I think you're incurring a rather big risk of having to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more, if you do not voluntarily comply with the by-district. But thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Vijay Jana Legata, and then Donna MacGyver.
First of all, thank you, council.
Welcome again.
And thank you for the opportunity. I just want to make a few points. First of all, starting with the CVRA law. What I've said several times, nobody knows it is winning that. No, no. So there is a reason, right? There must be a reason. Why, it must be a good law, right? But not able to win, everybody, anybody not following the CVRA, so losing it in the sense that, like, all I'm saying is, there is a reason why that law is so powerful. Nobody's able to win again in state. And the second thing is, my friend Tom Rupp said, like, okay, there is no problem racial representation in this city. That's not true. I mean, right now, we have YK and Rosario, but after how many years? How many years we have waited? How many years it has been, you know, colored person being in the city, sitting on the city council? Right? Okay, my third point is talking about the politics, money in the politics, right? How much, if it is by-large elections, at-large elections, sorry, how much money you have to spend to campaign? It's a lot of money, and it's not a good democracy. Politics, democracy, not good combination, like drinking and driving. So by-district solves that problem, right? So basically, a neighborhood person, it's a neighborhood election, so neighborhood person can win. And like my speakers before me talked about, you have a person to go to. Any problem, you have like insurance, right? You have, you know, protector for you. Like, you can go there and tell, this is my problem. You can say that. But right now, some people said, oh, I have five representatives. Well, is that true? Like, they're all busy with so many issues. They don't have time for your issue, because they, all citywide issues are their issues. And one other argument I have, like, my last point I would make, is that, you know, if everybody, each council member is coming from a district, and they only will worry about their district's problems and not giving a proper, you know, audience to the citywide problems, and they're quarreling among each other too much and not getting anything done, that's not true. I mean, that's like insulting the council members, that's like insulting, you know, I believe in you guys, you know. I, first of all, thank you so much for, you know, being on the council, because you are spending a lot of your family time here, and, you know, I don't think you're getting paid a lot of money there, sitting there. So I really appreciate your time, you know. I could have tried to come there, but I'm not going there because I don't want to put that much time. I'm more selfish than you. So the point is, you can do it. Even though you are representing your own district, you can still think of the whole city, because district is a part of city. The city is good, your district will be good. I mean, that's a simple common sense. So that is not true, that argument doesn't hold. And I'm bored.
You're counting off.
Oh, thank you so much. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was bored.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Donna MacGyver, then Paula Lee.
Good evening. I'll make it really short, and it's Donna McGuire, and I support the by-district elections. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Paula Lee, then Linda Ryan.
Good evening, mayor and council members.
Welcome.
I am Paula Lee. I am the advocacy director for the League of Women Voters of Sacramento County. And the League of Women Voters, for the benefit of the public, is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not oppose candidates or political parties. We study public policy issues, and our positions, if adopted, are a result of those studies and member consensus. We use our public policy positions to educate voters and engage in issue advocacy. So leagues across the country over the last many years have conducted formal studies of electoral systems. And in 2020, the League Women Voters of the United States adopted a position on voter representation in electoral systems. The position promotes an open governmental system that is representative, accountable, and responsive. We encourage electoral methods that provide the broadest voter representation possible and are expressive of voter choices. So we want to share our recommendations with you based on this position. We support alternatives to the current system, to the current plurality system, which you use, and many, many cities do, because it fails to provide the broadest level of representation for voters. Now, one thing really important to say here tonight, after listening to this discussion, is that at-large voting can be very good or very, very bad. Currently, fifty, in this current system, fifty-one percent of the voters get a hundred percent of the representation, or a hundred percent of the seats up. Forty-nine percent of those voters get nothing, get zero representation. So the California Voting Rights Act talks about ethnic minorities. However, in this current system, that forty-nine percent could be all kinds of different minorities. A minority point of view is not represented in that forty-nine percent that don't elect someone. Essentially, you might say that this is why the voting rights community has fought so hard for districts, because this system really is unfair if you use the plurality ballot. So.
Ranked choice voting.
If Folsom decides to keep its at-large system, we suggest you consider a proportional representation system, such as the ones, the one that was adopted by voters in Albany, California. They elect their school board and their city council with that system. That was adopted with seventy-four percent of the vote. Also, Cambridge, Massachusetts has used the same at-large proportional system since nineteen forty-one to elect its city council and school board. This is really the gold standard, because proportional ranked choice voting achieves the greatest level of representation. All five members could be, not necessarily, but all five could be elected at one time using a ranked ballot, where voters rank their preferred candidates. A threshold of seventeen percent of the vote, because they're electing five seats, would be needed to gain a seat. be needed to gain a seat. What this is, essentially is, majority rule with representation for a minority point of view. So minority points of view come in all different ways. They could be, like, I used to live in El Dorado County, and there it was slow growth versus pro-development forces. It could be people who support small business versus big corporate businesses in town.
I need you to wrap up your comments, please.
Okay, should you go to district elections? That would be our preferred recommendation, if you stay at-large. Should you go to district elections and divide into five districts, electing one winner each, we recommend a ranked ballot with a threshold of fifty percent plus one to gain a seat. Using a ranked ballot.
Mrs. Lee, I have to cut you off. You're way over time, and we've got a bunch of other people that want to speak on this.
Oh, I thought I had another minute.
That's counting up.
Huh?
That's counting up. You're at five minutes right now.
I'm at five?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me just say that we, finally, just to finish up, that we understand that the threat of this lawsuit is real, and there are ensuing costs that are a consideration, but we do believe that the Supreme Court decision that's being discussed right now could change the contour of the Voting Rights Act, and it would be perhaps helpful if you were to look at options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Next speaker is Linda Ryan, and then Dolly Sood.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Linda Ryan, and I promise to be quick. I want to first say, I've been living in Folsom about twenty years. I love living in Folsom. My daughter loves living in Folsom. I love my neighbors. What I've liked about Folsom is, even as the city has grown, it just seems to keep that small-town feel to it. And not just like, when I tell people I live in Folsom, I say it with pride. You know, it's like, yeah, I live in Folsom. And they're, you know, there is such pride living here. I do think that with by-district voting, that we keep people in their community engaged because we bring it down to smaller levels, and we still keep that wonderful, small community feel. I, you know, I want to retire here, all my children and my grandchildren to live here, but I want Folsom to maintain that heart and that sense of community, and I think this is the way to go, to make sure that it does that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Dolly Sood.
Hi, guys. I know it's very late. First of all, Mr. Wang, that was a good presentation. Nobody acknowledged that. So dear council members, I am Dolly, here to talk about supporting the by-district election. We have to move forward with this because it does provide fair representation, and it does cut the costs of the election. Why will we not do that and save hundreds and thousands of dollars? And we have more critical issues where we can move this funding, like the homelessness and other, fund other projects in Folsom. We have smaller cities adopting this by district, so it's only common sense for Folsom also to adopt this and comply with the CVRA. So, and I want to comment about some other speakers talking about change. Change is inevitable. We have to keep on changing. So that's not that we'll always stay like we were. And especially with South of Folsom, I'm not a South of Folsom resident, but with South of Folsom coming and being so big, we won't have anybody from South of Folsom. We, I don't know if we will or not unless we have this by district. So we have to think, when so many houses are getting built, that is also a responsibility that somebody has to, you know, what do you say? Represent them. Okay. The second point is that right now, there was another comment that we have a diverse group council right now, but that doesn't mean that we will have it for the future always, just because we have it in these four years, and we did not have it in the past, and we're not going to have it in the future. We don't know about that. So that is not an argument not to move forward with this. Thank you.
Is it not an argument to move forward with this, or an argument against using it as evidence?
Yes. That it's not an argument.
Polarized voting.
So it's not an argument, it's a double language.
I'm kidding. I didn't mean to, I'm not jousting with you. Your point is well taken. Thank you.
Next speaker is Catherine Corbett, and then Scott Bailey.
Welcome back, Catherine.
It's been a long time, and I'm a little rusty in my public speaking right now, but I felt this was so important to get together today because this is a big, in my view, a very big deal. And I would like to see us remain, you guys all do a great job. Our city does a great job. And I'm for keeping the at-large election. And after reading this, Scott Rafferty, and what he applies, it's like he's talking about a different area than ours. This might work in an area where they have all these problems that are mentioned, but we are much more progressive than that. So I'm hoping that we can continue at-large election. One of the strengths of our city, I feel, is how inclusive we are, not exclusive. And this process seems like it will be exclude people more instead of doing things as a whole city. I think that's one of our really big strengths. This sounds crazy, but I wish we could do a GoFundMe page because money seems to be a big driving force politically, and that's sad to me, really, really heartbreaking. And I am a Democrat, and I noticed that it was a Democratic club, which, you know, I honor that, but I would like it known that many Democrats I know, like myself, are for at-large election. If I needed to gather as many signatures that have been put in, it would be no problem for me to do that. We have good schools, we have so many things that are great community-oriented that I, it's just hard to understand this. And I'm also wondering about your time, how that will, will that squander your time if you have to devote a lot more time to separate things going on? That's a big concern for me, and I imagine you must think of that. Sure, I'm not saying everything, but that, let's see. Do you think having a lot of, this is, I'm just throwing this out here, a GoFundMe page? I wouldn't mind. I'd pay.
In lieu of campaign contributions?
Get a bunch of pro bono lawyers. And why don't municipalities, I don't understand why they don't connect up. I don't understand that. It's affecting so many, why, why we can't do that?
Catherine, I think the issue is the cities are being sued individually.
I, yeah, I see that, but I still think, why not go, well, we're going to get together and do something? I don't think it's impossible. And if this goes the one way, it can go back the other way. If it goes the way that I'm not going to like, I'll work really hard to help get it back the other way.
Very good.
So that's about all. I have more to say, but I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you very much.
And thank you again for all you do. I really do appreciate it.
Terrific.
The next and last speaker card I have is Scott Bailey.
Good evening, Mr. Bailey.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor, city staff. This is going to be a little different take, I think, because I think of myself kind of as a very objective person on this issue, and so I kind of have a little bit of a yin and yang thing going on here. But personally, as a longtime resident of the city of Folsom since 1986, and sitting here and doing that job and seeing a lot of councils come and go, I am against districting. I've been pretty firm on that. I prefer at-large. That's the yin. The yang part is, I think it's inevitable that you're going to have to vote for district, for districting, because of all the arguments the city attorney has presented. So with that in mind, I want to take it just a little bit different direction. If the city council decides to move forward, I would like you to take this opportunity to throw out the five districts and go to seven. It's been on my mind for some time now, but I believe the city council, it's a good opportunity to take this and expand it to seven. I would recommend this be adopted for the, in the 2024 election cycle, and at that time, we elect four members, thus keeping the three, four election rotation. I would also like, would also have, this would also have zero impact on the 2022 election and with regards to the current incumbents. The expansion to a seven-member council would add a more diverse pool of opinions to matters before the council. A split decision would be a four-to-three vote as opposed to a three-to-two vote. A seven-member council would weaken the argument of all those that feel the council is sometimes too stubborn or too stuck in a position. Seven-member council would give each council member around eleven to twelve thousand constituents under my, under my plan, and the member that is elected to the Folsom ranch area would have the bulk of the new residents in a rapidly growing district. Seven-member council would help lighten the load of the council, each of your members, with regards to regional boards, public duties, et cetera. You could share the fun. Seven-member council would make it less likely for a council member to be sharing a district, which is apparently a concern at this point. I understand that. We have enough chairs for seven members up there, and I'm sure Elaine would love to have two more people to do their city managers' briefings. A little bit of research. Oh, I'm sorry, on time.
Perhaps a summary of the research.
Okay. I looked at all the other cities in California with the populations between eighty and one hundred and forty-five thousand. Shows that their city councils vary greatly, some only have four, three members and a mayor. Of the sixty-nine cities in this population range, fifteen of the seven council, fifteen have seven council members. That's about twenty-three percent. Locally, it'd be Vacaville, Fairfield, Richmond, and Vallejo. The city of Lakewood, which has got about eighty thousand people, has nine. So I think it's time to at least consider that when you're drawing up those district, those districts, let's look at seven instead of five, at least have a discussion amongst yourselves. Please give consideration to expanding the council to seven members. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for those constructive comments. Is there anybody on the phone that would like to comment on this? Anybody else in the audience that would like to add two cents?
Hello, this is Patty Solzby again.
Hi, Patty, go ahead.
I just, I mean, I agree with the last two people, and especially, I think the name was Scott. I like the idea of seven. I mean, this is a, this is a huge town. I wouldn't mind a seven, or he also mentioned something about nine, possibly, but I just wanted to give a, a good example of, you know, the council that, because at-large, they represent all of us. They're not going to, I don't think they're going to like, oh, put their neighborhood before the rest of us. And then I wanted to add that, it was a few months ago, that one of our neighbors had contacted Councilwoman Aquino, and she actually came into our neighborhood, walked our neighborhood, and I think she walked outside on Blue Ravine because there was, we have an issue with, like, trees, bushes, or toys or whatever that are in the sidewalk area, and if you're, you know, hard of seeing or legally blind, it's a concern that you're going to run into it and fall down and hurt yourself. So I was just so happy that, like I said, she came in here. She also, there was a problem with street vendors being parked on the sidewalks. So, and I think there's something in the works about making some type of law regarding you can't block sidewalks for vendors or something like that, so. But yeah, I just wanted to give a nod to Councilwoman Aquino that she came into our neighborhood, and I don't know where she lives, and she probably doesn't live near us. So that's, I believe that, that we should stay with the at-large elections, but I'm also concerned about how much it's going to cost. And if, and if by chance, it's in Santa Monica, if they happen to win, then we could go back to at-large elections from, if we go to district-based elections, so. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. All right, you have some comments that wanted, people wanted read into the record?
Okay. This comment is from Teresa Garcia. Good morning. I wish the following comments to be read into the record of the July 27 city council meeting agenda item by by-district elections. I am in support of by-district elections so that I can vote for someone who represents my community's interests. In addition to bringing Folsom into compliance with the California Voting Rights Act, district elections mean grassroots candidates can win elections by speaking with their neighbors. They can run and win without the financial support from special interests often needed to campaign citywide. All citizens in every part of the city will always have a council member who lives near them and knows their issues. The city's cost of conducting elections is cut by fifty percent, saving taxpayers dollars. With the city of Folsom continuing to grow, it is more important than ever to have council members who live in the neighborhoods they represent to deal with such critical issues as infrastructure, city services, et cetera. Please include my support in your council meeting on this item, and please vote to move Folsom to by-district elections. That's from Teresa Garcia. Next one is from Chris Yatuma. Please read this statement into the record for July 27 city council meeting agenda item related to by-district elections. I support my district, I support by-district elections for the following three reasons. By-district elections are less expensive for cities to conduct than at-large elections. Cities with by-district elections require fewer ballots resulting in lower electoral expenses. City elections cost roughly one dollar per registered voter plus other fixed costs. Folsom has forty thousand registered voters, which equals forty thousand per, forty thousand dollars per registered voter for an at-large election. If the 2020 city council election were by district, consisting of five districts, the cost to elect two council members would drop to sixteen thousand dollars, saving the city twenty-four thousand dollars. It is more, it is also more affordable for candidates running for city council. Running in only one-fifth of the city allows more candidates to complete, to compete by taking, talking, talking to their neighbors rather than having a raise, to raise a great deal of money from special interests in order to campaign using mass media like mailers. By-district elections honor the principle of one person, one vote, by ensuring that voters have one representative who is specifically accountable to the voters in neighborhoods that elected him or her. By-district elections require candidates to campaign in their local neighborhoods, talk to their neighbors, and get to know their issues because they are who will elect them. The city of Folsom is racially and ethnically diverse. Roughly thirteen percent of the population is Asian, eleven percent is Hispanic, and five percent is African-American. Unfortunately, and notwithstanding the most recent election, the city's diversity has not been reflected on Folsom City Council. Californians have called for the replacement of at-large election, at-large local election methods with district-based elections in furtherance of the state's commitment to upholding voting rights for minority voters protected by the California Voting Rights Act, CVRA. The CVRA prohibits at-large election systems from impairing the ability of minority groups to elect candidates of their choice. Numerous cities have been successfully sued under the CVRA, Palmdale, Santa Monica, Modesto, over the past several years. Many northern California cities have transitioned or are in the process of transitioning Many Northern California cities have transitioned or are in the process of transitioning from at-large to by-district voting to avoid running afoul of the CVRA, including Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, and the Folsom Cordova Unified School District." That's from Chris Yatuma.
I was gonna start the clock on the next one.
No, the, the rest are short.
Okay.
Much shorter. Uh, the next email is from Eileen Chandler. "Dear council members, I support the by-district election issue for the city of Folsom, providing all districts have qualified, competent representation. Please read my comments into the record by tonight, at tonight's meeting." Eileen Chandler. The next one is from Sharon Waddell. "Folsom City Council, I am against dividing Folsom into five, into five districts in order to do away with the current at-large elections of city council members. The assertion that Folsom may be in violation of the California Voting Rights Act, CVRA, is simply an assertion and not proven. There has been no finding that the city of Folsom has violated the CVRA or any law protecting Folsom residents' right to vote, according to a statement made in the Folsom newsletter. The Democratic Club complaint letter states, 'The at-large election system places a significant electoral obstacle before minority groups and other protected classes of citizens in Folsom.' The terms 'social justice, diversity, and discrim, discrimination' protected classes, question mark, are popular these days, but I see this particular issue dividing our community rather than uniting us. I believe the better approach may be to shorten the term limits of council members to eight years, two terms, instead of the 16 years, four terms if elected. We need to allow new leaders a chance to step up, but only if they are qualified and want to put the needs of Folsom City above their own special interests.'" That was from Sharon Waddell. Next one is from Lois Ballard. "My name is Lois Ballard, and I live in Folsom since 1984. I support the by-district election. I am a member of the Folsom Area Democratic Club." That was from Lois Ballard. This one is from John Wright. "This evening, the City Council of Folsom has a chance to change the way elections are conducted in our city. By voting tonight by, for by-district elections, you will be increasing democratic representation in our city. No longer will candidates be required to campaign in the whole city, but they will be able to campaign in their specific district. They will be able to go door-to-door and directly interact with their constituent, constituents, because they will not be campaigning throughout the entire city. The constituents they represent will also feel empowered. Have an issue? Go and talk to your neighbor. Vote tonight for the future by voting for by-district elections. Thank you for serving and for listening." Last one is from Trish McKenzie. This is to Folsom City Council. This is to let you know that I am against any process to transition the city of Folsom from at-large elections to by-district elections. In a city our size, electing our five member, city council members regardless of where the candidates reside is a sound and fair process. Under by-district elections, each voter would only be able to cast one vote for one candidate that resides within their district, who may or may not have anyone running against them. Please keep our at-large election process as fair, as it is fair and inclusive. By, by-district elections will cause division and be open to unqualified or otherwise unfit people running unopposed." That's from Pati, Patricia McKenzie. And that's it.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna bring this back, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring this back to the city council for comment. Um, and I think I am going to ask Mrs. Howell, or Ms. Howell, to comment first with whatever she'd like to add to this discourse.
I've spoken to many of you tonight that are here supporting the district elections. I've explained on many occasions why I disagree with you. However, having said that, and having, um, a very, very strong belief that the, the whole subject of lobbying one neighbor and suggesting that all five of the council members in the history of the city council of, of Folsom, that they have not represented everybody in Folsom is disingenuous at best and insulting at worst to the woman who asked about what was happening in, in a neighborhood that I don't live in. We all know what's going on everywhere in Folsom. And if this is some sort of a, you know, if the belief is that, well, I can get stuff done if I only have to make one phone call, you need to understand that you can make one phone call, you can make three phone calls, you can make five phone calls, you can make as many calls as you want, or make no phone calls. But to suggest that one member of a council is going to be able to solve all of the problems in your neighborhood, that's simply not true. Because many of the problems that, that people raise are, you know, they're not, they're not legal, it's not in accordance with the city of, the city of Folsom's policy, or you're gonna be competing for funding with all the other neighborhoods in Folsom. So I think that's, that's very short-sighted if, if people are expecting that that's what's gonna happen. I don't want to do this. I think it's very bad for the city of Folsom. I'd love to see the, the Supreme Court overturn this. I don't know what's gonna happen. Am I willing to put the, the city's finances into what I believe would be, at the moment, a losing proposition? No, I'm not. Um, I think that all of the members that have been elected to this council, and there has been more diversity than apparently some of you realize, because the diversity goes back more than 20 years on the council. I think it's bad policy to assume that because I don't live in Natomas Station, that I don't know what's going on in Natomas Station. That's just, it's just simply not accurate. And so I don't feel like I have any choice but to represent what is in the best interest of all of the city of Folsom, but to move forward with this so as not to endanger the city's revenues on a lawsuit that until something happens at the, at the Supreme Court, is not likely to win. And two, and I can't remember who was one of the, one of the things that was being read into the record. This is not an action that was taken by the voters of the state of California. This is an action that was taken at the, at the State House. The voters did not vote on this. This is an action that was taken by the Assembly or the Senate. I don't remember, you know, where the bill initiated or how far it went. But that's very, very important to understand. So that's, I'm, I'm not happy about it, but I don't really see any, any choice. But I think the arguments that are, that have been made over this, to me personally, for the last three years, most of which hold absolutely no water, and I do not think that there is any universe in which moving to districts makes sense for the city of Folsom.
Okay. Mrs. Aquino, would you like to comment here?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, I'll try to keep it fairly brief, but, um, yeah, you know, I've said before, I think there are advantages and disadvantages to both systems. I personally think the advantages of our current system outweigh the disadvantages. But I also can see the writing on the wall with what other districts have done, who have gone to court. And, um, transitioning, making the transition ourselves does ensure that we have some control over how the districts are drawn. Um, I do think it's going to result in less compromise, uh, among the council. I think it will result in fewer people running for, um, elections. And, you know, when somebody contacts me and says, hey, I have an issue, I don't ask them where they live, I just respond to that issue. And I, it's, it's kind of comical to me that the, the, um, the Hildreman Circle, um, example keeps coming up, because I live probably a mile and a half from, from Hildreman Circle. I would be your person if we were in districts. Um, I'm on that street every week because I have friends that live there. My son's friend's house has been hit twice by drivers on that street. Um, and it isn't a case that you don't have somebody who is representing your interests. It's that we do not have the ability to unilaterally close off a road, when the county, uh, when another county is right on the other side. So there's, you know, there's more to that story. But, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of with Carrie. I, I don't know that we have a lot of choice. Um, and certainly, um, I think we're gonna have to find a way to try to continue to work as a unit, to try to make sure that we're all representing the best interests of the city and not just our district. Uh, but, so I will say that I'm, I'm going to reluctantly, uh, support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chalantchirla, would you like to weigh in?
Yes, sir. You know, when we sent 3,836 mailers, we got 0.01% back. I know, this is what I think our city manager always says. We try our best to reach our residents. Sometimes they may not reach them, you know, one way or another. Uh, but, you know, I want to sincerely thank each and every one of you here. You care about us, this issue, whether it is for the, at-large or for by-district. And also the people taking time to write the emails and people listening on the, a call. Once again, I want to sincerely thank you. And as you see, I think the numbers are speaking up there. Even though we want to fight it, if that is the right thing to do. I'm making a comments here, you know, starting with our, um, Mr. Donald Box. He is right on to address his issue of his L and L. If he has a by-district election, he thinks his council member is going to be helping him and accountable for those issues. That's the resident spoke. We, as a sitting people, we got to listen to that one. At the same time, I just want to call one or two. Uh, Tom, Mr. Tom, when you are speaking, maybe the passion? I got the goosebumps. Believe me. I know, usually, you know, Jennifer Lopez probably may be saying on The Voice or somewhere. No, you seriously spoke with your passion. And I do see the, both sides have the arguments here. At the same time, what are we going to, you know, uh, you know, come to the conclusion by again, looking at the dollars? Uh, I still going to give my best, uh, what Attorney said. If Santa Monica is challenging, if they are going to win, several of the cities are thinking, I know, uh, what is right or what is wrong. Uh, when I spoke to the mayor of Roseville or Elk Grove, most of them are saying what my two council members mentioned before. We don't have a choice. And I, I, I want to just make one more comment here. If I'm living in my district, am I not going to represent the entire city? It is going to be a false allegation. I can sincerely say that one. You will have more people to reach. Sometimes if you don't have the right council member, you are, you are lost. So I, I want to rethink the people who are looking for by-district. We all are your representatives. Think that way. But at the same time, do we have a much choice? Probably not. And the numbers are speaking again. $22 million. I hope that's going to be a plus. A, a success. If not, so it's going to be the, a big loss and, uh, I, I do, I do, you know, hear Vijay said, you know, if no court and lawsuit won, maybe this is a, a, a good lawsuit. I don't know. I want to, you know, right away buy onto that one. So having said that, I'll, I'll just conclude and see when the voting goes, you know, which way we are going to win. But I heard each and every of you, and I have my own opinions as well. Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Well, I need to start out by saying that I consider myself to be fiscally responsible, um, a fiscally responsible person. And so when I look at this issue, this situation, and Folsom, and have we been governed, it makes me very sad. It makes me think, you know, be careful what you ask for, because in the long run, you just don't know what you're going to get. The California Voters' Right Act was created to give underrepresented communities some representation. And some of the reasons that have been given, that I have access to my, to my council member, that it saves money, um, for candidates to run, that it saves the city money on elections, that, um, you know, what was the other one? Competent representation. That's, those are not the reasons why. Months ago, when I had, or actually, it was sometime last year, when I had conversations with the Folsom Democrat Club, and somebody had said to me, well, it really is a bad, it was all for the, not the reasons that the California Voters' Right Act was created. And my con, my response to them was, it wasn't for, you know, a Caucasian person to represent a Caucasian community or predominantly Caucasian neighborhood. And so, and then it became, I, my, you know, an understanding of political. We are, not only are we a diverse city council, we're also diverse on the political realm. We've got two no-party preference, two Republicans and one Democrat. It's a, it's a very well-balanced, um, city council. You know, when, um, when I think of myself and just, you know, uh, representation, as I shared many times before, I am a Latina descent. I come from immigrant parents. I am a business owner here in Folsom. I am a habitual volunteer. I love my community, and I ran for city council. I worked very hard and got elected. And, and I would repres, I would, whether it would be people of color, or whether it's Caucasians or whatever, I feel like I would represent my community. Um, it does make me very sad that I feel like I'm sort of cornered into this because I want to be fiscally responsible. And so those are my comments.
Okay, very good. All right, I, I will just add, um, a couple of things. I think it is completely reasonable to expect that you will reach impasses even with close friends where you land on opposite sides of a topic, okay? So I hope that we all end up walking out of here tonight regardless of the outcome, remembering that we are all part of the Folsom community and, and mean well. I, I also have to tell you that the, the frustrating part of this for me, and one specific thing is, with regard to what the CVRA does, not in terms of the effect that it has, but what it does to the political discourse around this topic. Because it is so impossible to argue against the conclusions that the CVRA automatically imposes, it actually makes all of the discussion that we had, all the good debate about this topic, it renders it moot. And what it does is it changes, it changes the ability of well-meaning people to actually debate this topic and decide for themselves. So the choice was taken away from Folsom and its residents by the, by the framing of that law. So passionate you may be on either side of whether it's good or bad, there is no reasonable person that would put at risk $30 million of our city budget to try and fight against something that is effectively inevitable. So that's, that's the one thing. And that's the frustrating bit for me because, you know, I could be persuaded that by-district elections is absolutely the right thing to do in Folsom, but I didn't really ever get that chance. I only was told it is the right thing, and it's the only thing. So that's where we're at, okay? I'd like to caution everybody that I am, generally speaking, an optimist, but I'm very realistic about human nature. And humans have this frustrating knack for acting selfishly, okay? And I, the, the role of a city council person right now and in the future will be the same. It will be to provide advice and consent to the city manager. And if they want to get something specific done, they need to convince the majority of the members of the city council to agree with them. So while you may end up with a city council person that lives in Natomas Station, for instance, not, not to single them out in any way, that doesn't necessarily mean that that person will be particularly persuasive. They may end up on an island and be completely ineffective. So I just want to give that caution to everybody that whether that somebody is elected by district or by, or at-large, they could be effective, they could be ineffective, and the city charter is not going to change with regard to us being run by a city manager. So with that, I will remain optimistic that our currently elected officials will continue to represent everybody with fully egalitarian motives and ask for a motion.
With extreme reluctance, I will move the resolution.
With extreme reluctance, I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 10575.
Councilmembers Howell?
As I said, yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalantchirla?
Yes.
And Costelowsky?
Yes. Okay. Let's move on to new business.
New business item number 13 is Resolution Number 10674. "A resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom proclaiming existence of a local emergency due to extreme fire danger."
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Members of the council. Ken Casano, your fire chief. Did it not come up? Tonight, I'm asking a council to proclaim the existence of a local emergency due to extreme fire danger. Over the last three years or so, California has been in drought conditions, directly affecting vegetation. The vegetation is extremely dry. San Jose, San Jose State University Wildfire Research Center, every April goes out, they measure fuel mo, fuel moisture in the area. This year, in April, they measured the fuel moisture at ninety-seven percent. That's the lowest ever recorded in the state. Normal is at one thirty-seven, and then a hundred and fifteen percent is considered low. This is the active fires currently in California since two thousand and one. As you can see, there are currently five thousand five hundred and sixty-six fire incidents that were reported in California. There are a couple of big ones that are still going, like the Dixie Fire. The interesting thing to note is that you'll, you'll see the numbers up there on this website. When we wrote this resolution and staff report just about a week ago, those numbers were drastically different. The number of acres burned has gone up ninety-six percent in one week.
I'm sorry, Ken, what's, I'm only looking at this because in the resolution, we've got that eight thousand acres on Dixie Fire, and I know that number's dramatically larger than eight thousand acres.
It's, it's over two hundred thousand acres now.
Right, so, i- if, assuming that this passes, can we, you know, at least add a notification in here that, that it's increased that dramatically?
We can, we can adjust all the numbers, but it will probably be an ongoing adjustment until that fire is actually out, because it's, it's probably going to grow even more than this.
And it's minimal containment, from what I heard this morning.
I think it's around twenty percent, fifteen to twenty percent. The number of structures damaged, that, that has gone up as well. It's up a hundred and thirty-nine percent from, from what it was when we wrote this. Just in Folsom, since July one of last year, two thousand and twenty, we've gone to forty-seven open space vegetation fires. That equates to about seven hundred and sixty-eight hours of working. That's just personnel on the fires. That averages out to about fifteen hours per incident. And that, these numbers do not include all the mutual aid, the regional support that we get from other agencies to help fight these fires. They, they typically take a long time when they get into these heavy vegetation areas. The City of Folsom has approximately a thousand acres of open space. A good portion of that is along bike trails and walking paths. These are adjacent to homes, businesses, and parks. Nearly all of the open space is a fire hazard currently due to, to dry vegetation. I've investigated fires for the city over the past fifteen years, and vegetation fires rarely occur naturally. They occur naturally due to lightning. Folsom is not in a lightning-prone area. There's almost always one common denominator, and that is the human element. Whether it's smoking, campfire, warming fire, burning trash, using machinery, mowing, weeding, welding, grinding, any open flame in the dry environment right now, you are going to have a fire. So what I'm about to show you, this was allowed for us to use, it was a video by the Beech Hut Deli owner, Steve Brown, who I believe is here tonight. This fire occurred a little over a week ago, on Blue Ravine Road in East Bidwell, in the, the Humbug Creek drainage area.
All right, here we go. I just got to my Folsom Beech Hut. Hopefully, we don't lose the building. This went up, I was out here, I just happened to be driving by, and I, I did my best with a couple of fire extinguishers, couldn't get it.
So I'll have to commend him for even trying to extinguish that with a fire extinguisher. And I'm sure he can testify to the fact that the speed at which these fires grow is incredible, and the heat that they are putting off is an, you know, it's just, it's an incredible In the city right now, with some of these fires, we are seriously dodging bullets. It, all it takes is the weather conditions to be a little bit different, and we are going to lose structures, we are going to lose houses, and hopefully, we, we don't lose some, you know, somebody's life. That would be the worst. So the pictures on the right are communities in Folsom currently. The picture on the left is the devastation from the two thousand seventeen Tubbs Fire in Santa Rosa. Santa Rosa was a lot like Folsom. It, it can happen, and that's what we are trying to avoid. So again, I'm asking the council to proclaim a local emergency due to extreme fire hazard conditions in city-owned open spaces, so we can restrict public access. The Parks and Rec Department gave a presentation over ladder fuel and weed abatement. They talked about the hazard assessment is conducted, and we use a, a fire hazard rating I propose using the exact same system to determine the priority for closing open space areas. A fire hazard rating system is made up of six elements in order to pri, prioritize geographical locations to close. These are the, the wildland urban interface threat to structure, the fire history of the location, emergency vehicle access, the fire spread potential, population use, and then proximity to homes and businesses. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Okay, why don't I start down at this end this time? Rosario, any questions?
I don't, no questions for me.
YK?
Thank you, Chief, for sharing this one. We said like over a thousand acres of this kind of fields we have? Is that what I heard? How many acres of wild-prone?
I believe the city has approximately a thousand open space acres.
Thousand open space. You probably may have some ideas. I'm going to put this, you know, in front of you guys. I do agree on the human element. Thank you. You, you are very well described. You know, it's from lawn moving to somebody's cigarette bud to, you know, all those things. We do have some, you know, challenges with, if we start blocking the, the areas where some encap, encapments or the homeless things. How are we thinking about those ones, if those are in that one thousand acre feet? So if no humans are going to enter, obviously, they're going to be on our city roads. I don't know whether we have, think through that kind of approach, and how to handle that situation. Number one, I'm supporting what you guys are doing. No question about it. Right? I, I know Steve is here. He is, he's, he was so there to, you know, take that one, and we have to save the structures. But I'm thinking on the other side too, just as a, what are we thinking as a city if there, we are going to block all the places, and they're going to come out on the street, how we are going to handle that situation?
Are you asking rhetorically? Because that's not really the fire chief's department. How to manage homeless? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's what. So, maybe I could comment to that?
Yeah, please.
So you're asking, in a hypothetical situation, if we close off an open space area, there happens to be homeless that are, individuals that are living there, and then they push out to, say, on the trail, or, okay. So, so the, those experiencing homeless, really, really, anyone, can't, can't block right-of-way. So, you know, and a trail would be right-of-way, so we would deal with that in, you know, in that way. But I, but I will say to the council and to you, Councilmember Challem Charla, that certainly, it's, it's a possibility that those experiencing homelessness will move out of the designated open space into an area that might be more visible, might be next door in the park. You know, these are public spaces. So, we will continue to do our best to educate those experiencing homelessness about opportunities for housing for them and connect them to services. Police Sergeant Zelaya is, and his team are frankly amazing in their approach to doing that for those that want help. So we'll just continue that focus. But you're absolutely right, it, it may just push some individuals from one area to the next, or even, not even necessarily to other parts of our land, but to land that is not ours, like to land owned by the state, because this wouldn't apply to those areas. So, we're doing the best we can here, trying to deal with what we, we believe is an emergency situation.
Absolutely. No, but I sup, as I said, like, I support what we are doing, but there is on the other side, we do have some scenarios, those things. Good, thank you.
Very good. Carrie, any questions?
No, just thank you to the fire department, and I know there was, that there was another structure fire again today. Guys are doing an amazing job. I hope that the firefighter that ended up at the hospital today is doing much better. Thank you guys for everything you do. Only, my only disappointment in this is that the, updating these numbers is going to make them significantly larger. And I, you know, at this point, it's obviously an overexaggeration, but I'd like to see firing squads for anybody that gets caught with fireworks at this point. And otherwise, I'm, you know, happy to support this. Unfortunate that we have to do that, but I don't see that we have a choice.
Very good. Sarah, any questions for the chief or the staff?
No, no questions, just thanks to Chief Casano.
Yeah, same. Okay, we have a couple of people who've asked to speak on this topic, so I'm going to open public comment, and...
Steve Brown.
Call Steve Brown down. Steve, I wish we had met under different circumstances.
You were there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, first of all, thank you for, for having me and allowing me a platform to discuss this. I am Steve Brown, I am a local restaurant owner, I'm a local resident, and I currently operate multiple Beech Hut Deli franchises, so this was a store of mine. My wife and I happened to be coming home from an event, my baby was sleeping in the backseat, and we saw a lot of smoke coming from behind Autozone. So I pulled in, checked on my staff, they didn't seem to have any issue of what was going on. I locked the business up, just to keep them safe, because I didn't know what was going on, and I found a fire. So I took a couple of fire extinguishers, tried to get it out, and I did my best, and I just couldn't do it. So I ran back to my car, grabbed my phone, my wife was on the phone to nine-one-one, and then that's when I ran back to start filming. And so, big thank you to the, you know, obviously, the, the fire department, the police did a great job at, at, you know, managing and taking control of the situation, waiting for fire to get there. Obviously, this situation escalated very, very quickly. Luckily, the winds were blowing up toward, there's a big lake on the other side of the paint store, so our building was saved, so thank you. I, I didn't lose any sales, I'm, we're still fine, but as, as, without touching on the homeless situation, I can tell you that it was a homeless camp where it started. The individuals were detained, and, and I was, you know, asked to identify, you know, individuals at that point. I didn't see them start a fire, so I couldn't identify them as the ones that started the fire, but I did identify them as the ones that were residing behind Autozone. I think that's a whole different topic that I prefer not to touch on, but I can confirm that it was started in a homeless camp, and the individuals there, that's, that's how, that's, that's where it was. I, I don't know who started it, but that's where it was started. You know, my staff is, has made several references to our landlords in regards to trying to have the vegetation, you know, serviced behind our building. I don't know to whom, or funding, or how those works. I don't own the building, but I know that the landlord has discussed with different individuals a process to, to, to have that, you know, that landscape serviced. But I hope that you guys can, you know, work with the Folsom City Fire Department and, and work with whatever they need, and as I am just a concerned, you know, business owner, is, I was in the right place at the right time, I tell you that. There could have been a lot of problems if the buildings went up. So, we're safe, everybody's okay, and, and a big thank you to, to, to both law enforcement branches that were there to help us, so. Does anybody have any questions for me? I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, I'm just glad that your employees are okay.
Yeah, everybody's all right. There was no issues with anybody, nobody's at, no, you know, everybody on, on their behalf did the right process to keep everybody safe, and there was people on top of roofs, I mean, there was people everywhere. There was twenty to thirty trucks, I mean, it was a pretty big deal, so. It was our whole fire department and Eldorado Hills. And Eldorado Hills, yeah, all E eighty-five, E eighty-seven, I own the Beech Hut Deli in Eldorado Hills, so I know a lot of those guys, and, and they were all down there too, so. And I, and I was the first, I was, I left there about one, and I was the first, one of the first people back there at about five-thirty or six in the morning, just to see what was going on, obviously, I wasn't exactly going to go home and sleep, and, and there were still multiple trucks there at, at five-thirty in the morning, still working on it. And they were there throughout the whole day, trimming trees and, and, you know, making sure that there was no, nothing else started. So they, their due diligence was phenomenal as well, so. Yeah, yeah, good. I, I definitely, without, you know, saying too much, it could have been avoided, to say the least, so.
Very good. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Okay, Patty Soulsby, are you still with us? You wanted to comment on this?
Yes, I do. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, fire away.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to mention that, I wanted to mention that fire as well behind Autozone. So I live in a shore subdivision, which is also known as Blue Ravine Oaks. We are looking on, looking on Blue Ravine, in between like Riley and Bidwell, but we really back up to the Golden One, so not all the way to Bidwell. July twenty-seventh, the Folsom Telegraph states that the city has had at least a dozen fires started in homeless camps this past year. And, but, we hear that the fire chief said we had, like, we're not glad to hear, the fire chief has mentioned forty-seven open space fires in the past year. Add that to what the Folsom Telegraph said. When we just had a fire, it was on July sixteenth, along the Humbug Willow Creek Road, or Trail at Blue Ravine and Bidwell. The fire came very close to the Autozone, Beech Hut, Leslie Pool, et cetera. I believe that Folsom was very lucky that day, that it wasn't a windy day, or it couldn't have been much worse, like to agree that we do have a, a great fire department. I also wanted to point out that my concerns on Blue Ravine, between Riley and the Golden One Center, that, oh, Golden, I'm sorry, I go there for sports, Golden One Credit Union, that we have a lot of dry grass along Blue Ravine, along Blue Ravine. And so, at crossing, the street crossing, if you look right across, from crossing to Blue Ravine, there are a lot of trees that are touching the dry brush, and if the dry brush catches on fire, the trees act as a ladder fuel, which could be disastrous to our, our neighborhood, the apartments below, the parking trails there, and the, and the homeless camps that are also located there. And then, of course, also on Blue Ravine, that backs up to our subdivision, we have, you know, redwoods underneath the power lines that could easily catch on fire if, you know, if it's windy and the sparks come over into our neighborhood. So, oops, so I would like the, the city to be proactive and not the fire department to be reactive when there's a fire, and asking the city can, can we maintain or that area? And I'm not, I'm not just talking about my subdivision, there's lots of areas in the City of Folsom. There's lots of areas in the city of Folsom as well that also need management of the dry brush. But is the city, is the city going to, like, maintain that area to prevent fires, or or is there a way, if you can't do it, is there a way to hire a contractor to reduce the fire hazard?
Yeah, we're a, we're a victim of our success in terms of having a nice open spaces, so managing them is a challenge, and this is part of, this is one step tonight. Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any any further comment from the city council?
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalum Charla.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
Mayor Kozlowski.
Okay, we've got to return to item number ten.
Exactly, thank you.
Or nine, excuse me.
Item nine, the public hearing.
Okay, let's resume item number nine, the public hearing regarding the lighting and landscaping district. And the city clerk is here to provide us with the results of her tabulation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Krista Fremantle, your city clerk. So we completed the ballot tabulation for Prairie Oaks Ranch, number two landscaping lighting district. We had a forty-three-point-four percent ballot return rate, and of those ballots returned, fifty-five-point-five percent were in favor, and forty-four-point-four percent were opposed. So given that no majority protest exists, the council could proceed to consider approval of resolution number one zero six seven two.
Okay, would anybody like to ask questions or discuss this? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to resolution one zero six seven two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalum Charla.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Folsom Fire Department and the Folsom Police Department, both of them who have personnel among the frontline responders assisting with California's wildfires. This Thursday, Folsom Fire Department Type Three OES engine is deploying as part of a strike team to the Dixie Fire. Their anticipated return date is August twelfth. Also, Battalion Chief Clint Madden was sent to the Tamarack Fire on July seventeenth, and then reassigned to the Dixie Fire on July twenty-sixth as a strike team leader trainee, and and he won't be returning until July thirty-first. And then our Folsom Police Department has been providing law enforcement mutual aid assistance to Plumas County for the Dixie Fire since July twenty-fifth. So thank you to all of those personnel for everything they do, and then these these additional duties to help others. National Night Out returns Tuesday, August third. The Folsom Police Department, the city, the fire department and city officials, including the city council, will join residents at neighborhood parties organized by local neighborhood watch groups. National Night Out takes place annually in communities across the country, and to see if there is a party in your neighborhood, visit www.folsom.ca.us/polic. And in the interest of time, I will just drop the rest of my comments, but I did, most importantly, want to wish a happy belated birthday to Councilmember Rodriguez and a happy early birthday to Vice Mayor Aquino. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Outstanding. Okay, any council reports? Rosario.
Yeah, I do. I think there's, just with a lot of the activity going on with police and fire, I'm very interested to understand more of the response times. Is there a goal, and where are we now with that goal? And then also, just, you know, I've been really interested in economic development, meeting with some regional leaders, and one of the things I learned is that the University of Oklahoma has an Economic Development Institute. So I went online to check out some of these courses, and there's one that's a prerequisite that's offered actually here in Fresno State. So it, the the courses that are offered through this are actually really interesting, and it's open to all. You don't have to be a council member. This is something that anybody who's interested in economic development can participate in. Summer concerts are in full swing, and we're really enjoying attending some of those. Wednesdays at the Palladio, Thursdays in the Historic District, and Friday at Lyons. And this is just a great way to support your arts and culture. I also want to give a big shout out to Steve Hurd, who's a local realtor, who has been bringing us Jazzy Sundays. And it's been great to get a little jazz on Sunday afternoons. And so there's been two for the past two Sundays, and then there's one on Sunday, August eighth, which will have Latin jazz. Renee Escovito, who comes from a very popular line of jazz musicians. I also want to give a thank you to the Folsom Rotary Club of Folsom for their work on the Willow Springs Reservoir. Phase one was completed of demolishing and rebuilding the wildlife viewing platform. And then just a really quick update on the Folsom Alliance for the Unhoused. They have now have five people that are in inpatient services, and with two are that are in the works. That's seven people that have Folsoms unhoused, people that are Folsoms homeless. And so I just want to give a really big shout out to Jake's Journey Home. They offer the wraparound services to get people who are experiencing mental health or addiction into services. And so the fact that seven of these individuals are, could potentially now be in services is really great. What it does in turn is that it gives them the heart of Folsom, the ability to find some of these individuals housing, and these are people who now have had, you know, the root cause of addiction and into services. And then what else? That's, that's it.
Excellent. YK?
Chief Casano, you know, please communicate a big thank you for all your team members on behalf of me. It's, I was there, and it's a big thing. And and thank you for sharing. I think our team is out there, you know, fighting the state-level fires and all those. Last week, I attended one of the Eagle Scouts. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me. Andrew Grandstaff. Wow, you know, it's it's always so nice to hear all those achievements, and, you know, one of the notable one is, they went to the robotics competition, and they stood as a world number three. That's a big deal. That's a big deal for all of us, right? And the other one is, city manager and maybe Christine, I think we have seen the numbers, right? You know, we sent the three thousand eight hundred and ninety-six mailers, and we got zero point zero one percent. So that means we probably may be doing more and more communication. How? We'll try our best. We'll try our best, because that numbers are showing, even though we are sending, we are doing our due diligence, but sometimes it is losing somewhere else. And and also, I think we have the Folsom Historic District, the parking team came, and they were speaking. Mayor and myself, we went there, and they have some unreasonable, low-hanging things they want to accomplish. I know we have an agenda item already for September, so I I request or wish if we can talk to them before that meeting, see whether any of them we can put into that route, because they, as a united team, wants to try a pilot kind of approach. So think about that one. And with that, I'm looking forward for the first national night out with our teams. Once again, thank you again, and good evening.
Excellent. Sarah, any report that you'd like to give?
I have nothing to report. Nothing to report, but thank you.
All right. Carrie?
All is good at RT. They actually were given an award for the for the best operated mid-size transit system in the country.
Nice.
So there, things are going really, really well at RT. This is my crazy busy week. Regional Santa is tomorrow morning. The Connector JPA meeting is Friday morning, so I understand that construction continues, and thank you to the, all the city of Folsom staff that are working on that, overseeing that project. That's a good thing. Again, thanks to the fire department. They've been way busier than they should be, and I'm just glad that that they're safe. Again, people are still driving like maniacs. They're speeding everywhere, running stop signs, running red lights. When I left the council meeting last, two weeks ago, I'm driving on Willow Creek, there's a car coming up Flower, and it was, I don't know, it was about this time of night. Guy came around that corner, blowing through that stop sign, probably doing forty-five miles an hour. And I don't even want want to think about what would have happened if I had been the one that he hit. I'm not sure who would have been in worse shape after that, him or me, but, you know, and this is in the middle of a neighborhood. It's it's a neighborhood. It's twenty-five miles an hour. The parking, anybody know the speed in a parking lot? Based on the vehicle code, it's ten. So, you know, you paid for that odom, the speedometer in your car, please use it, and, you know, drive like there's a cop behind you, because maybe, maybe there will be. With that, good night.
Okay, I will also add my thanks to Folsom PD and Fire for acting swiftly on, with the fire situation on the sixteenth. And I hope that our our actions tonight will help the fire department get a little less practice with open space fires the rest of the year. And during National Night Out, I'm going to take a little bit of a pit stop to mint, help mint a couple of more Eagle Scouts on Tuesday. There's a bumper crop this year because of backlog from COVID, and SACOG and STA are both in recess right at the moment, but we're going to resume meetings in August. And with that, I'm going to call this meeting to a close. We will stand in recess until August twenty-fourth, and we are at ten twenty-four adjourned.